Good afternoon. We're gonna call the regular meeting of City Council to order. We're gonna have Councilman Balls do the prayer and Councilwoman Wiggins do the pledge.
If you would like this, please bow your head. In the name of God, the most gracious and the most merciful, be it long we seek for your guidance and be it long do we guide. Thank you for bringing us here today to the City Council meeting so we can do the business of the city. And God, please look over all the citizens and all the workers of the city of Saginaw. Please bring them here and make sure that they go home safe. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Seals.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Braddock.
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
And Mayor Moore is absent. You have eight members present and one absent.
Audience, welcome. This is a public meeting of the City Council. Audience must remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, cheering, booing, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. Announcements, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we only have a proclamation on the agenda today. It's recognizing March 31st, 2025 as Caesar Chavez Day.
I will be reading it today. The City of Saginaw Proclamation, Caesar Chavez Day. Whereas Caesar E. Chavez, one of the most important Latino leaders in U.S. history, was born March 31st, 1927, in Yuma, Arizona, in Labrador, and Juana Chavez. And whereas young Caesar and his family moved to California following seasonal work after losing both their farm and store in 1937 as depression intensified and years of drought forced thousands off their land. In 1944, Caesar joined the Navy at the age of 17 and served for two years. And whereas Caesar Chavez toiled as a migrant farm worker alongside men, women, and children who performed daily backbreaking labor for meager pay and deplorable conditions. Caesar Chavez devoted his life to correcting these injustices and reminded us that every job has dignity, every life has value, and every person should have a chance to get ahead. And it says in Spanish, "Yes, we can." And whereas Caesar Chavez, as an American labor leader, co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, also known as UFW. Caesar Chavez became the best-known Latino-American civil rights activist and was strongly promoted by the American labor movement. Chavez led his demonstrations with nonviolence and was instrumental in defending and protecting the rights for farmworkers. And whereas, the American GI Forum of Saginaw, a veterans' organization, continues to celebrate and honor Caesar Chavez for forging his legacy of service, conviction, education, and principled leadership that services and as an inspiration for all Americans. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow councilmembers, do hereby recognize that March 31st, 2025, as Caesar Chavez Day in the City of Saginaw and call upon the citizens of this community to reflect on and honor the life of this distinguished leader, veteran, and American. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Saginaw to be affixed to this label this day, the 10th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2025. Signed by Brenda Moore and the City Council members. Do I read the names? Priscilla Garcia, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Eric D. Braddock Sr., Carly Rose Hammond, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostash, Jacinta Seals, and Heidi Wiggins. Timothy Morales, City Manager.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor Protem, councilmembers, and staff. My name is Miguel Guzman, a Vietnam-era veteran, the commander of the American GI Forum of Saginaw. We are here today to express our gratitude for your unwavering support and recognition of the Caesar Chavez Scholarship Luncheon Program. Your dedication to the City of Saginaw and your roles is truly impressive. And the sacrifices you make to protect and improve the community do not go unnoticed. We would like to take the opportunity to thank everyone for supporting the Caesar Chavez Luncheon Scholarship Program and the contribution to the proclamation of the Caesar Chavez Day. The American GI Forum has not gone unnoticed, and we are incredibly grateful for it. Thank you for your support, and we invite you all to join us March 28th, 2025, at the UAW Local 699 at Bagley Street in Saginaw. From 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. to celebrate the occasion with us. Thank you again for your support, and hope to see you all there. And remember, si se puede, yes we can.
If you'd like to come up and get your...
Hey, hey, how you doing?
Good.
How's your presentation looking? Good to see you.
That's Mr. Guzman. Buenos dias. Buenos dias, buenos dias.
Want to come up here?
Nice to see you, sweetie.
Some nope.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
The public hearings... The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for the council to hear comments from the speakers regarding specific action being requested. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please state your name and say if you are in support or oppose the subject of the public hearing. The main speaker or a designated representative should speak first as they allow 10 minutes to speak. Additional speakers will be limited to three minutes. This is not a question-and-answer session. Therefore, questions must not be directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Madam Clerk?
Our public hearing today is regarding the issuance of airport revenue bonds.
Okay. A total of three times, let me see.
I was just gonna ask if there's anyone here...
Okay, is there anyone that's gonna be talking about this matter? So that was quick.
Thank you. My name is James Canders. I am the Airport Director at MBS International Airport, and I'm here speaking on this $7.6 million revenue bond that is being proposed for various solar projects on the airport. So first and foremost, this is not a tax, and it's a revenue bond and will not impact any taxable members of the community. So it's gonna be 100% MBS International Airport's responsibility to pay and won't impact the local municipalities. We're gonna be paying for this with revenue and savings from the installation of the solar projects throughout the airport. We're looking at the project contract amount is roughly $7.3 million. We're going to be saving, well, revenue and savings of about $390,000 a year. And there will be an IRA rebate associated with this, if we get it completed by the end of the year, of $2,176,000. That would be going back into the project and helping to pay off that revenue bond. So what this project will do is it will improve some of the services at the airport terminal and throughout the entire facility. The terminal will gain covered parking immediately next to the main entrance. That's gonna be the short-term parking, will become entirely covered with a solar canopy. And the airport will gain about 10 dual-port Level 1 EV charging stations. That's basically your household outlet in the long-term parking. So if we have electric vehicles that are there for long durations, they will be able to charge their vehicles. And there are going, that's gonna be about 20 charging locations overall in long term. In short term, there will be a minimum of two dual-port Level 2 EV charging stations. This is 2.40 volt outlet, and there'll be four charging stations. That's gonna be in short-term parking, and we'll charge a vehicle in four to six hours on average. We do see a lot of EV vehicles going into that lot, and they do need to charge occasionally. And it will also allow one DC fast charging. That's your fast charger, one to two hours max. And the intent is that it will also double to potentially charge electric aircraft. We are seeing them come in. We had one come in last June, and there are actually four airports, other airports in the state that are setting up electric aircraft charging stations. So they are here. Then the solar will offset energy usage in the terminal. Roughly 35% of the energy usage associated with this project, I have another solar canopy project at the rental car facility. That'll offset another 17. So about 52% total of the terminal revenue or the terminal electrical costs will be reduced, which is attractive to get new airline service in here because they're concerned about total energy costs within the building. So that may help us attract some new service. The administration building, my office, which also doubles as the fire station, will see about 85% to 90% of energy savings with the ground-based array that we're gonna have there. And then the airfield lighting vault, that's the vault that powers all the runway and taxiway lighting on the airfield, will see about a 99% rebate. So I couldn't quite get it to 100%, but I tried. So some of the miscellaneous items for this. Local labor and material will be used. Solar modules are entirely domestic and made in the U.S. 100% of the steel is made in the USA. Labor is 100% local Michigan contractors. Solar panels can be recycled. Up to 95% of the solar modules can be recycled, and 100% of the infrastructure is recyclable as well. And the company we are using, they specialize in installing this system at airports. They've done airports all over the country. The life of the solar panel arrays is guaranteed for 25 years. Could go as high as 50 years, although productivity might drop off a little bit after 25 years. And with the weather here, some people wonder how's it going to look with snow on top of it. The energy production is averaged throughout the year, so of course naturally in the summer it's gonna be a lot higher production. But solar panels tend to melt snow quite quickly, and there'll be gutters and everything through there. But so an additional covered parking, you would still get some solar production in the winter. So that's really all I have to say on this project. And I will, one last time, say there are no local taxes that are associated with this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call for comments two more times.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak regarding to this matter? Last call? Anybody else would like to come and speak to this matter? Alrighty, move on to public input?
Ask for a motion to close.
Can I get a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we're gonna move on to a public input.
You need a vote.
Pardon me?
You need a vote on the motion.
Oh, it doesn't say that here. I'm reading what it's telling me. Okay, so we need a vote on the motion. Everybody say aye or nay?
All those in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
And opposed?
Any opposed? Alright, motion approved. Okay, now we can go to the public input. Alright, try it again. Speak clearly, not like me, and remain courteous and respectful. When appropriate, staff may follow with your concerns, may follow up. The city clerk will call you to the podium. You have three minutes to speak, which is timed by the clerk over there. When your times are up, you may take a couple of seconds to complete your final statement. Council, allow a few seconds for the speakers to wrap up so that we can remain consistent and fair to all speakers.
Our first speaker is Joseph Morrison. On to Joyce Seals.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council members, and the manager, City Manager and staff. I'm Joyce Seals, who lives at 255 North Woodbridge in the City of Saginaw. I have come to talk with you to clarify the recommendations our collaborative group has requested of you. First of all, we are not trying to preempt state law. That is not legal. Marijuana legislation went into effect in 2019. We cannot change that without a ballot initiative. Nor are we trying to talk you into changing the decision that a previous council made to allow recreational marijuana in our city. Nor are we trying to stop adults from exercising their right to use marijuana. But we are saying that a moratorium will allow you time to study this issue in depth and come up with a realistic number of outlets we should have. A cap should not impact any revenues coming into the city if you were to keep the cap at the number you currently have. We are saying that we have enough outlets, and you have to be courageous enough to make that decision. It seems to me you should want to help your current marijuana retailers by not allowing the marketplace to be flooded so that they cannot make a profit. We want to change the environment and the culture in Saginaw that encourages positive behavior, not negative behavior, and attracts uplifting businesses in our community that foster a shift in what we're calling our Saginaw today. Saginaw awesome. In order to do that, we must have leaders who will stand and be bold enough to make tough decisions. I believe that's you, City Council. Don't let us down. We're depending on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Our next speaker is Inez Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager.
Good afternoon.
To all of our students and everyone who has packed this facility out. I'm Inez Williams. I have come to talk with you to clarify the recommendation of our collaborative group. First of all, we are not trying to preempt state laws. That is not legal. We're here because we're requesting that there is a cap be placed on the marijuana outlets in our communities. The American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry states, "The use of marijuana can lead to school difficulties, problems with memory and concentration, increased aggression." We're concerned about our youth in our community. It also states, "Lower grades, absenteeism, reduced motivation, difficulty with cognitive functions." Study shows that teens who use marijuana frequently, often, experience a decline in their grades, how they perform in school, how they interact. There also are individuals who disrupt the education process, and it does allow teachers an opportunity to teach. There's an increased risk of dropping out because of the use of marijuana. Most teens who use marijuana are more likely to drop out of high school or not pursue higher education. Increased risk of other substance because they don't feel the high or the influence that they once had, they migrate, move forward to alcohol or either other drugs. President John F. Kennedy once stated, "Children are the world's most valuable resource, and it is best hope for the future." Our young people are the next leaders and change-makers of our country and the stewards of our planet because they're wise, they're brilliant, intelligent, smart. They have the power to continue to become the very best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Lionel Grant.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. I'm Lionel Grant. I'm with the CAND Council. And members of the council, I'm speaking today in the area of prevention, specifically in support of placing a moratorium on the establishment of additional marijuana dispensaries. For those who may not know, CAND Council houses our Children's Advocacy Center. When there's allegations of physical or sexual abuse or neglect, children receive services by this entity. This consists of a conversation, non-leading, to get to the bottom of what took place. We have a wonderful turnout here today. I see young leaders. Kudos to you for being here. I say, leaders of tomorrow is great, but you are leading today. You have an opportunity to be a leader in the classroom, an opportunity to be a leader in your neighborhood. Keep it going. We believe in our council, and the decisions they make will impact you directly. As I stand here, I'm sad to say, over 600 children walked through the doors of that Children Advocacy Center. That's enough to fill an entire elementary classroom. I'm gonna throw in there, majority of those had cases of sexual assault that took place. At least 80% of their households noted drugs and alcohol as the leading cause of abuse or neglect. This inspired us to take a deeper look. We were able to look at 25 cases. We had 25 cases using a voluntary tool that folks could fill out. Seven opted to fill it out. In all seven of those cases, there was the presence of drugs and alcohol. You'll find that I've submitted a letter signed by our CEO standing in support of placing a moratorium on the establishment of additional marijuana dispensaries. Honorable counsel, we implore you to join in our mission to protect children for the City of Saginaw and surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
On to remarks of council.
Councilmembers, just a reminder, there is a three-minute time limit. This afternoon, we will be starting out with Councilwoman Silva, and then we'll go from there.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Protem.
I don't need a break for a call, but would it be okay if I approach the...
No.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Silva.
Okay, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came to your City Council meeting today. Especially, thank you and kudos to our young people today. We shared lunch. We shared some talks this afternoon, this morning. Really, time does go, doesn't it? And this is your council meeting. And also myself am very concerned with some of the information that the young people came and spoke about in regards to prevention. I myself, I am a prevention consultant, so I know a lot about that even further than maybe what you had time to explain. So I've had years of training, so I definitely understand that. I had the pleasure of going to a ball this past week by CAP. It was awesome, awesome, awesome. And what I looked at, where some people probably wouldn't look at, is the amount of young people that were there and how very well they conducted themselves. It was just an awesome time. So it is some places for some of our young people to go, and we're trying to make it better for you as we go on because we definitely don't know everything. And it's up to you, young people, to let us know what you want and what you don't want to see. Also, I'd like to give a shout out and also like to get a certificate of recognition, possibly, to Pastor Chet Atkins and the work that he's done for so many years in regards to the homeless. I had an opportunity this, a couple of days ago, to assist him and Chucky Lawrence in regards to feeding, clothing, giving out blankets to the homeless. But this is something that Pastor Atkins has done for many, 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 many years. And on a bad note, as far as I know right now, so don't beat me up, one of the only African-American churches that has been doing this and housing the homeless and letting them come in, letting them get warm, letting them take showers. So that is something you may want to go by and visit or whatever and help him out. That is across from the Fire Department in downtown Saginaw. So hopefully, some of this stuff will come up in miscellaneous, so please don't leave because I will be saying some more in regards to some of the things that I've heard here today. You all have a blessed day, and thank you so much again for coming to your City Council meeting. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Seals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. It's great to see the youth out today, and everyone, thank you for coming out. For our youth, I hope you guys been enjoying yourselves today. I know it's great to be out of school. And, but mostly, I hope that you can take something with you today. I hope you learned something today. I always say when you experience things like this that you hopefully share what you have grown and what can you take away from this experience. So I call them grows and glows. How can we grow as a city to help you become better citizens and hope you become better leaders, but also, what are the things that actually went well today? How did the city do well today? I would love to know that. And I know our city staff and how they put on for you guys today. I know they would love to know how they did also. But also let your teachers know and let the people know that brought you guys out today. The grows and glows, so I think they will love to hear that information coming from you high schoolers. Also, in the past two weeks, I've actually went to a Clint Black concert at the Civic Center. Let me say Dolly Benson Center to tell you how old I am. At the Dolly Benson Center, that was my first country music event. It was very lively. I think I had an extremely awesome time. I think I had an extremely awesome time. I think I hung, that was the most, the first time I hung out with people probably around my age. And Clint Black is an awesome singer. He engaged the crowd. It was packed. Just great to see just Saginaw, Saginaw County out in droves that evening. It was the last week of February. And had a great time. So again, people say there's nothing to do in Saginaw. In Saginaw County, there's a lot to do around here, guys. We just have to open our minds, open our hearts to different things that's outside of our circle and outside of our bubble. And then lastly, I appreciate the, I think it was, was that the, for your cousins? Was that the GI Forum veterans that were just here? Appreciate them coming out today. Caesar Chavez group that was out today. I do plan on attending that event at the Bagley Hall on March 28th, so to support that initiative. So please come out and support Caesar Chavez on March 28th at 1:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Boss.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to thank the students for coming out today, participating in city government and learning about government and participating in the lunch that we had today with the GI Forum. Thinking about the GI Forum and the people that was here, speaking about Caesar Chavez Day, a wonderful Hispanic-American civil rights leader, labor leader of the 20th century. Him and Martin Luther King had some of the same vibe when it came to infiltrating workforce with everybody. Now, we have a president that want to get rid of DEI, and here it is, we got civil rights leaders who died for the right of us to have diversity, equity, and inclusion in the American way. You know, we see that. I don't want America to go backwards. I want us to keep going forward. You know, these guys gave their life for the cause of making sure that Hispanics had the rights and had, and good treatment on their jobs. You know, back when supervisors were treating them bad just because of who they were, it was terrible. Now here it is, we got these issues going on today where you think we need to get rid of diversity, equity, and inclusion. But hopefully, you young leaders will do the right thing when you come up and make sure that all Americans are included in the American way of life. You know, Martin Luther King, you know, died, got assassinated for helping out sanitary workers in Memphis, Tennessee. That's what his shadow met when he was protesting the rights of the sanitation workers. You know, and here it is, we got, and we coming right back to the same thing again. So hopefully, we gonna, we gonna do the right thing here in the city, try our best to employ everybody that need to be employed. As a matter of fact, we have a jobs fair coming up Wednesday, 8:30 to 2:30. And all the people that do work for the city of Saginaw, the pipe fitters, the electricians, the labor unions, they all want to come out and make sure that we get jobs for all the citizens that live in the city of Saginaw. So anybody looking for a job, please come out, 8:30 at the Anderson Richmond Center this Wednesday for the employment fair. You know, being a labor person myself, I came out of labor unions myself as a civil rights cheerperson. And I know what goes on in the plans when we don't have people that look out for our rights. So today, during Caesar Chavez Day, that we need to continue to do the right thing. Another thing I want to say, I'm ashamed of myself for voting for the marijuana issue here in the city of Saginaw. One of the worst things I ever did as city councilperson to go along with us having these dispensaries here in the city. If anything I could do to help make sure we don't have more, I'm willing to vote for that because all these things going on on the side of the city of Saginaw are just not fair to our citizens to have all the drug houses over there. So thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman, Councilman Haste.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. And I'm sorry you're recov- I had the same thing that you had, so I hope it gets better. But mine was the gift that kept on giving and came back and got me again. So welcome, everybody, today to the council chambers. It's always wonderful to be here. This is one of my favorite meetings that we have is when we have Student Government Day and we invite everybody to come. I was not able to have lunch with y'all because I run an IT department during the day, so I didn't get out of work until 11:00. So and also, too, our Hispanic community that was here for Caesar Chavez Day, what an important thing to recognize, especially in the labor movement. But Mr. Gill did ask me to put a little Spanish on it today, so buenas tardes, that's good afternoon. And I will also be attending the Caesar Chavez Lunch. So if my colleagues are gonna be there, I look forward to being with you. We can all sit together in that. Also, the folks that came to speak about cannabis in the city again, thank you very much. Mayor Joyce Seals, yes, mayor, because once the title, always the title. She has talked to me, as from the last meeting, we've been having some conversations there. I do know the word "CAP" has been used a couple of times, and I do just want to expand on that because when cities tried to put a cap on versus a moratorium, that did cause issues for them at the time that they were implementing. So we can talk about that. I've already talked to our attorney. And that was one of the reasons that the city of Saginaw put such strong setbacks around schools, churches, and other areas. Now, without, our zoning department is here in the room, and I do sit on the planning commission. There has, what I see, now this is me speaking, some changes in the zoning of where these establishments will be in the city. So before, it could be anywhere except the DDA district. And so now, it's gonna be limited to certain corridors and in the industrial areas. And so if you've ever seen a GIS map where you bubble out where you could have these businesses, to me, that's really gonna restrict that. But I'm gonna say that I do support why you're here today. So my other colleagues, they're probably flipping over in their chairs. I was part of the movement that was here when we brought that into the city, and there were some reasons why we did what we did. If we were to opt out of it totally, individuals under the state law could petition, get signatures, create their own ordinance, and we would have had to have accepted that. And they were actually in movement to do that. So I know I'm running out of time, so I'm just gonna wrap up here real quick. But I look forward to having more conversations with Mayor Seals and her team, and maybe more conversations with her attorney so that if we did do a moratorium, legally, we don't put ourselves at jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Braddock.
Good afternoon to the city of Saginaw, city council members. I'd like to thank the student government, the students here. Glad to see y'all come. Hope y'all learn a lot from us and learn a lot from the city staff. Also, I'd just like to address the Chavez, Caesar Chavez. I'm also a veteran myself. I have two combat tours. They left, though, but I, it was good to see. I seen the pins, the jury they had on. So I recognized the infantry badges, the airborne badges, and all those things, so it's good to see that and see what, you know, and see that happening here in our city. But as far as the dispensaries, I would say that, yes, city council, you know, has a responsibility on making decisions that shape our future. I think that once we, once we do put a cap on these dispensaries, there's still a lot of work to do afterwards in building our youth. And I think we should strategically look at things to help build our youth in our community as well, you know, to make sure they have access to, you know, and have access and be able to have the environment to be able to grow, grow in our city. And even to grow into building their own families in here, you know. So we gotta leave something behind. So I think we do have to look at, you know, just the dispensaries. Sadly, that's pretty much like our newest development in our city. You know, those buildings, you know, look attractive more than a lot of things. So we do have a lot of liquor stores. We do have dispensaries. We got closed schools. We got, you know. So we have to, we, I believe, are, on the east side of Saginaw, we do need to see some changes on that side of time and some development over there. I would like to see that. But also, that's all I have. I'm not gonna just like thank everybody that's here. Also, too, real quick before, one thing that is important, too, though, with that is our crime prevention. We need to start looking at the crime in our city, and we need to start making decisions based off that. It's gonna take the parents, community leaders, mentors, go take everybody to fight against the crime that's happening here. And it's not just here, it's happening in all across America and inner cities. So we need to really look back and be strategic on what decisions we make for our youth and for our community. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you to everyone who's, who came out today, especially the students. I love seeing you involved, for whatever reason it is today. If it's to get out of school or actually to, you know, learn more about what we do here. You are our future, so thank you for being here. I did want to touch base on, you know, the marijuana dispensaries. For me, I'm just trying to put together the access of the children getting the marijuana and the actual dispensaries. The kids cannot walk into a dispensary and get it. So there's something there. We have to bridge that gap, kind of like what Councilman Braddock was saying. And it is for the health of our city. I would also like that energy put between, before like liquor stores or fast food restaurants or things like that because, you know, all of that contributes to the health of this community. So we do need to help our kids and give our young people something to do as well. I appreciate Mayor Seals for coming out and telling us, you know, your reasoning behind it, behind the moratorium. You know, we'll figure this out. Nobody wants a dispensary on every corner. Nobody wants a liquor store on every corner. So we'll figure this out. The end of March, I will have the privilege of being in Washington, DC, representing, talking to the, to the leaders there about SNAP benefits and Medicaid. So those two things are needed in our community here very strongly. I believe it's like one in five kids across the nation, you know, that depend on some kind of food assistance. So I'll be there at the end of March in DC representing those causes. What else do I need to say? No, just thank you for everyone that came out today. And I'm sorry I couldn't come to the lunch. I was actually at my office across the street, couldn't get away on a Monday, but I'm glad I got to see you guys now. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So first, I want to address, there was an individual in the back who couldn't make public comment. We do have a rule about a certain hour, hours of time that you have to sign up. So if you'd like to address the council, you can send us an email. I will tell you at citycouncil@saginaw-mi.com. That goes to all city council members. like a hyphen, not like an underscore, mi.com. So if you would like to, you know, write down what you would like to say and address, we'll get that email and we'll see it. So thank you. And I apologize for the restrictions we have and appreciate you coming today. So in addition to that, I had the wonderful opportunity to help teach middle school a couple of weeks ago. A friend of mine teaches history and civics. Yeah, oh yeah, history and civics at Carlton Middle. And he kind of gave me free rein to teach you up a local government and civics class. And he gave me the whole class hour. So I did that for like four consecutive hours and then a lunch and then another hour. And teachers, I don't know how you guys do it. Like, I think all of us agree that teachers are not paid enough, but high schoolers, you know y'all are a lot. You know middle schoolers are a lot. It's a lot. Also, I got, I did get the nickname DJ Mustard during one of the classes because I had a yellow sweatshirt. So feel free to change my nameplate. I'm now DJ Mustard. I actually have no idea if that's a real human being, so I don't, I don't know who that is. I am, I am as nerdy as I look, so, okay. I don't, I don't know. So anyway, on the nerdier side of things, there is another upcoming MCAG meeting, Eastern Michigan Council of Governments. I encourage folks, if you have time to make it out there, it's on weird times at weird days, and people are busy. But it's, they are do, they're doing their full council red team meeting. Last time I was there, I learned so much. It's other leaders, a lot of supervisors from area townships and regions. We talk about housing. We talk about grant opportunities. We talk about fears and grants that might be retracted. So it's a great space for folks to come together in various local governments and kind of talk about what's going on. That is coming up Friday, March 15th at 10:00 AM. This time, it's in Bridgeport Township Hall Offices. So right next door. So if you can make it out there, that'd be great. It is open to the public. Obviously, only members can, can vote on certain things, but it's a great discussion, and they're super welcoming of new people. And they love when people want to come out and hear what they have to say. Also, I will say that I was very upset. I went to the Zoning Barriers to Affordable Housing document. It's a PDF done by a HUD report to find out that it was missing from the HUD site. It's a lot of documents that appear to be missing from our federal government sites on best practices, and I find that to be very concerning. So I wanted to let people know that that's an issue I'm running into. And if you have issues retrieving government documents, I was able to use the Wayback Machine, which is an internet archive site. So fellow council people, if you have any issues, I can walk you through that process. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but not least, me, Mayor Pro Tem. Good afternoon, concerned citizens of the community. I want to thank the three schools that came, the Success Academy, Valley Lutheran, and United Saginaw for attending this special day. It's always a fun day. And it's, it's a good day for us council members because we're not out as late, and we can enjoy the rest of the day. Today's supposed to be really nice and warm. It was a lot of fun. I got to learn a lot of new things because when I got elected on council, I was the newest kid on the block. So by taking the tour with you guys today, I got to learn. So that's why I was asking questions. I wasn't just trying to be like, want to know everything. But I didn't get that privilege, so it was fun learning that with you guys and seeing behind the scenes. And I didn't realize that those water operators are there 24/7. And I'm like, wow. So I just learned a lot and that the horses can't get up the stairs at the fire department. So that was pretty cool. So there was a lot of interesting stuff that I learned. And then also, having lunch was a great time. I want to thank the speakers for Caesar Chavez. That hits home to me. My family, they grew up in the fields, and they gave me the opportunity that I could work that way hard or I could go to college and be somebody. And that's the route that I took. I know how to work hard, but like they say, work smarter, not harder. So there's a lot of people that in my family that have worked in the fields, and I had close friends that would always try to get me to go. But it is a very tough job. And I'm thankful for those that are still doing that job because we have all these fresh fruits and vegetables, and without them, we wouldn't have that type of good eats through them. So we just got to remember the things that we take for granted other people don't, you know. So, and I just want to say, yesterday, my daughter, which I know I don't probably look that old, but I have a 24-year-old now. So I get to celebrate it with her, my two grandsons. And I'm raising him, he's two, to be a future leader, a future politician. He's two, and he does most things that kids don't even want to do. He shovels, he rakes, he polishes. He does anything and everything. He teaches me how to shake his baby brother's bottle, how to burp him. So you guys are very important for our future. And it's important that we have resources out there and things for you guys to do to keep you busy in this community and stay active. And hopefully, one day, I can look back and say, oh, I sat with them and ate lunch with them. So thank you, guys, for coming. So thank you guys for coming. Enjoy the rest of the day and have a good one. Thanks. That'll be it. Madam Clerk?
That takes us to reports from the manager.
Reports from the manager. Okay, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. So we do have a number of items today. First, I would like to thank those individuals involved in planning and hosting the Student Government Day. As I mentioned last time, this day dates back to the, I think, the 1920s. Thanks to the students from Saginaw United, the Success Academy, and Valley Lutheran. And thank you to the Saginaw Fire Department, the Water Treatment Department, and the Saginaw Police K-9 Team for demonstrations. And our co-host with this event is always the American Legion Post Number 22. So thank them for all their work. So we do have a new item that we were just starting this year and we wanted to do that today as well. So if they're listening in the other room, or Grace, could you bring in our Employees of the Year? So today, we do want to recognize our 2024 Employee of the Year winners. This is something new that we're just starting this year. As you all know, each year we have the awards at the Fire Department and we have the awards at the Police Department. But we realize we're not recognizing our civilian employees very often and they're very important to our operations and offer 24-hour services and are vital to what we provide to citizens. So we want to start recognizing them and we may be doing more things to come. But this will allow the city to recognize non-public safety employees who have consistently demonstrated exceptional performance, dedication, commitment over the course of the year. The awards highlight not only hard work, but also the values and behaviors that align with the mission of the City of Saginaw. So I want to congratulate our winners for 2024. And I'll go through them and have a chance to shake all your hands too and be recognized. So our Administrative Services Employee of the Year is Rachel Hosezka. She's in the City Manager's Office. And she was selected from the areas of Human Resources, City Manager's Office, City Clerk's Office, OMB Community Services, and Tech Services. And Rachel is recognized for her positive attitude, reliability, and dependability. She's the first contact with many citizens that come into the City Manager's Office and she's very adept at assisting the mayor and the city council. When you guys request things, usually it goes through Rachel first, so congratulations to Rachel. And our Financial Services Employee of the Year is Kelly Sheltra. Kelly started as an office assistant with the city and is now the Income Tax Administrator. So she's worked her way up through the areas in fiscal services. She has excellent problem-solving skills and has demonstrated an exceptional level of professionalism and expertise that has significantly contributed to the success of the department and overall financial health of the city. Congratulations to Kelly. Our Water and Wastewater Employee of the Year is Juanita Obeeto. Juanita has successfully demonstrated exceptional performance, dedication, and a positive attitude that makes her a true asset to our team and the entire City of Saginaw. She continually is looking to improve, streamline, or just make our day-to-day operations easier. She is recognized for her innovation and problem-solving teamwork, commitment, and values, and strong work ethic. Congratulations, Juanita. Our Public Services Administrative Services Employee of the Year is Joe Nugent. In 2020, Joe was promoted from Traffic Electrician II to his current role as a Traffic and Electrical Administrator. Since his promotion has more than exceeded expectations and has been exemplary in the new role. He has a difficult job of working with many other divisions and departments within the city to coordinate work. And Joe is recognized for his collaboration, teamwork, and willingness to take on new tasks, so thank you, Joe. Public Services Line Staff Employee of the Year is Kenneth Knapp. Ken was nominated for Employee of the Year in recognition of his exceptional work ethic, positive attitude, and dedication to the Public Services Department motor pool. As a Technician II, Ken consistently goes above and beyond in every aspect of his role, demonstrating qualities that make him an invaluable team member and a true asset to the department as a Technician II. Ken works on various equipment such as loaders, movers, all series of trucks, packer trucks, trailers, and more. Ken is recognized for his positive attitude, work ethic, versatility, and excellence in repairs. Congratulations, Ken. Uh, finally, we have our overall Employee of the Year is Bob Goleen. And he's with the Department of Planning and Economic Development. Bob was hired to be the city's urban planner in 2019. During his time at the city, he has improved efficiency, accuracy, and professionalism in the development process. His leadership has been instrumental in guiding Saginaw through this period of revitalization, bringing a fresh perspective and innovative strategies to the table. Under his direction, the Planning Department has adopted a business-minded efficiency, leveraging technology and data-driven decision-making to streamline workflows and achieve more effective project outcomes. Saginaw continues its journey towards revitalization. Bob remains a pivotal figure in shaping its path, particularly in 2024 with the ongoing zoning ordinance update. Zoning ordinance has been added and to and modified over the years, but has not been thoroughly updated since the 1970s. This has been a significant endeavor and a meticulous process, but once it's finished, it will give the way for a new era of growth and development. And congratulations, Bob. All of our employees of the year, congratulations. They all do a good job, so I'm proud to recognize them. And they did get awards, but they're in their bag, so. So do you guys want to come up and shake hands with council members?
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks for what you do for us.
Well deserved. Congratulations, well deserved, sir. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you, guys. Recognize.
So again, we do want to thank them for all their hard work. And they're not employees that you see too often and it's good to recognize them. Probably a lot of them you've never seen unless you go on some of the tours, so. And we want to do some other employee recognition things, so we'll try to get council involved in those too. Councilmen Balls, I think, and the mayor helped us last time we did a breakfast, I think, so. We'll try to do more for them to make sure that they are recognized. And this, I think, is something, the organizations of interest to the students here. And I did meet with a few of their board members last week, so I want to point out some items with it. The Saginaw Promise was formed to be an economic initiative to attract, to affect Saginaw's economy and quality of life through post-secondary education. The organization is working to eliminate barriers to higher education through information, programming, and scholarship. This aligns with our goal to increase our population. Since 2012, the organization has awarded $1.35 million in scholarships to 745 students. Graduation rates have increased overall and dropout rates have decreased overall. Saginaw Promise Scholars have earned certificates and degrees. Five certificates, 45 associate's degrees, 124 bachelor degrees, 19 master degrees, and one doctoral candidate. Awesome. Students do have to apply for this. They apply at the community foundation and it has to be in the Saginaw School footprint. So um, they wanted to, they said I could mention this. But I was recently given the honor of being asked to serve on the Saginaw Promise Board, so my first meeting is Wednesday. So very proud to do that and glad that they asked me. And I think it'll be a good bridge between the schools, additional schools, the schools on Saginaw Promise Board and the city. So hopefully, so be a good, long-lasting service on that board. So I can continue to bring back this great information and hopefully help get more people involved. And we do have several presentations today, so I would like to get into that. And first, is Nancy Johnson here? Nancy, oh, there you are, behind the podium. So Nancy is with Community Mental Health Services. And as you know, we do have a contract on the agenda today, so I wanted to invite her up to the, give a brief update and answer any questions. I will say that Nancy, I don't know how long, but I know you've been working with the Police Department for probably a decade or more already. And this contract we've been working on for probably six months or so, we've been talking about it. So we're glad to get it to this point. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nancy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of the council, and everyone in attendance. I'm Nancy Johnson from Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority. Um, I'm the Supervisor for Crisis Intervention Services. So my staff, the staff under my supervision, are the staff that are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days present in the City of Saginaw to handle behavioral health, crisis, and emergency. We have staff at 500 Hancock, as well as we have an office embedded in Covenant Emergency Room. So my staff and myself are present 24 hours a day. So when you think about the City of Saginaw and you think of the public safety net for our citizens, it's the Saginaw City Police, Crisis Intervention, Emergency Room. It's the people who are available every day, all day and all night, to provide services for the community. Back about 10 years ago, I started to go to the roll call at the Saginaw City Police. Every other month, I attend the roll call and I present on a mental health, behavioral health, or substance use topic. I sit with the officers, I go to all four of the roll calls, I go to the rotations, and interact with the officers, not only providing training, but also networking with them, providing the opportunity for them to ask questions, but most importantly, really connecting the officers with Saginaw County Mental Health. In addition to that, I also do all new officer orientation. So I have just become part of the orientation process. When a new officer is hired in the city and they're getting orientation on every other part of their job, they get exposure to what it is to be working with individuals in our community who have mental health and substance abuse conditions. So from the very first day, officers are encouraged to really learn about and to interact with staff that can help and assist in a behavioral health emergency. So when the officers come into Covenant Emergency Room, bringing someone in, our staff are right there in the emergency room. We have an office there. We also go to My Michigan Ascension, formerly St. Mary's. Our staff go there. And so if a person is in a behavioral health emergency, our staff are available to work with the officers and the medical staff. The other thing is, about 10 years ago as well, Chief Ruth is hugely supportive of community engagement. So I started working with the officers. Anytime there was something in the community where the officers could be involved. Last Friday, we did read out loud over at Stone School. I mean, we're always out in the community looking for opportunities for the officers to engage with citizens in a very positive and productive way. So what we've been talking about is, the city manager mentioned, is formalizing the relationship between Saginaw County Mental Health and the Saginaw City Police in a way that we can exchange information, we can have some protocols in place for our involvement, not only for myself and my work with the city police, but for other staff from Saginaw County Mental Health as we're interacting with the officers. My role mainly has been to provide training and support for the officers. We want to expand that as well. Um, in April, we're going to do a four-hour training for all law enforcement across the county. Uh, not only myself, but my colleagues from Saginaw County Mental Health. And it's the importance of building a partnership between Saginaw, between mental health in general and law enforcement. So we're expanding our training because if you just think about it logically, in the month of February 2025, the Saginaw City Police responded to over 5,000 calls for service. Research says about 20% of all calls in a city this size have a component of mental health. So the sheer numbers of the individuals, the citizens that law enforcement are interacting with lets us know the importance of having a really strong partnership between mental health and law enforcement. Um, I also work with the victim services, but this contract would allow us to help out the workers in the victim services, help to get people attached to mental health services. We know that a person with an untreated mental health condition is 16 times more likely to die in a fatal encounter with police. That's just a national statistic. It is really important for us to connect our officers with every single resource and training opportunity and for us at Saginaw County Mental Health to make sure that we're engaging everyone possible we can in mental health services. So that's really important to us. Also, one of the things that we would do would be to really work closely with the individuals who are providing substance use service in the community. We know that that's a really difficult job and that we need to connect people to those services. So not only mental health services, but also services for substance use disorder. We know that we have a high incidence here of individuals who could really use our service and intervention where substance use disorder is involved. I've worked with the response teams, the, getting the Narcan Initiative out, just all aspects of behavioral health and substance use disorder. Um, I also sit on the ALPAC, the Advocates and Leaders for Policing Community Trust with Chief Ruth. And we wrote a grant recently that allowed us to do five different interaction luncheons with officers and individuals in our community diagnosed with intellectual and mental health conditions, intellectual disability and mental health conditions. So the partnership is a real strong one between us already. So this contract would allow us, again, to formalize, to put some things in place, and to increase the number of hours that are actually would be available to the Saginaw City Police. So I think that's about all. I open to questions if anybody.
Have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so the Saginaw Community Mental Health, it's the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority.
Correct.
Um, so is, in terms of this authority, that means it's a private-public partnership currently, right?
Yes, we were part of Saginaw County and then we became a separate entity in the 1980s, actually.
Okay, I'm just wondering, under the governance and bylaws, what kind of money already comes from the City of Saginaw to help fund the Saginaw County Community Mental Health Authority? Any directly that we're familiar with?
I don't know.
Okay. Because it's, I do believe I know a couple of people on the Board of Directors and I've just looking at the public meeting schedule, I'd love to try and make it out to a meeting or two just to see how things function. But for this, the contract that was referenced in the agreement reference compared to the work that's already being done is, when we're talking about number of hours worked and services provided, do you know what kind of nature or need that would be filling for the community?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Anything that I do now or our staff do now with the city is simply an informal agreement for training or intervention. I'm not sure I really understand your question.
Okay, basically because as an authority, I'm assuming there's some kind of like funding mechanism and reasoning mechanism since it's a, you know, semi-government entity, a mandate to do certain work in the communities of Saginaw County. Is that correct?
We're Medicaid and non-insured, we're the, the public mental health. So our charge is to work with individuals with mental health and intellectual disabilities. I mean, we have a strong desire and partnership. I don't think we have any formal obligation.
Understood, thank you. That is exactly.
The CBHC.
Christie, this is my executive director. She's just gonna comment on that because she probably could be giving you that information.
So this partner, so our funding is block funding. So we get a carve-out of Medicaid dollars from the state of Michigan, which comes down from the federal government. But we primarily bill Medicaid and for services, so that funding comes from Medicaid. Um, we are paid to do direct service only, mainly. So a lot of the community interaction that we do is carved out of the services. So we don't really get reimbursed for that. Because we only get reimbursed for seeing individuals. We get a small administrative fee, but it doesn't cover just time spent with education. So that is just part of what we do as a responsibility to the community we serve. We do have many other grants that we've, we use to cover a lot of the community services that we do. A lot of the training that Nancy talked about, going to health fairs in the community, just making our services known to the community. So we have a handful of what we call block grants that go with that carve-out. So this would, this contract would be paying for Nancy's time because Nancy, and we added other staff because we did not want the city police to be without staff should Nancy have other obligations. So her obligation So her obligation under community mental health is to the citizens of that. And we know all of the work that Nancy has done with not only the city police, but all local law enforcement is very vial to make sure that the people that we serve are getting the services that they need. And really having that collaboration so we can, because we know jail is not the right place for them, so that we can work with law enforcement to make sure they're getting the help that they need. So this pulls Nancy out of her current position, allows her to work with the law enforcement. But somebody does have to do the work that's left behind, so we're covering that with other staff as well. So it really works to make sure that there's coverage all across. We know that this partnership is great because of the work Nancy has done beforehand, but also you might know that there is a lack of master's level clinicians clinically. And so this allows us to share resources and to work together and work in a way that does not take from the citizens of our community.
I appreciate that, and thank you for understanding what I was trying to ask. I appreciate it. And I do have another administrative question, kind of, I would just, because I know that the Saginaw area has a continuum of care model. Can you describe your relationship to the Saginaw County Continuum of Care? Because it's, I'm sorry, it's a structure I'm unfamiliar with, so I'm baby stepping, asking question about it.
The continuum of, so what we tried to do recently, probably about five years ago, the HIPAA laws were not made looser, but allowed us to talk to primary care physicians, to talk to group homes as part of that continuum of care, to make sure that we can share information without having a release of information signed. So if you go to the doctor, that HIPAA is always one of the forms that the doctor has you sign to make sure that you can share information. Because we are a community in mental health, because we see people, very frequently their first contact would be with our crisis team at Covenant. And so we're, because we're embedded in Covenant and we're a separate entity, this helps so that we can have that conversation without worrying about breaking any HIPAA laws. We still do have individuals sign releases of information because we want to make sure that they have a clear understanding that as part of that continuum of care, as part of that interaction, that we have the ability to talk to people. But because of, through Medicaid, there's some laws that make it okay for us to talk to people without individuals signing that release of information.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Silva?
Thank you. Thank you so very much for your presentation, first of all. A question I have may be partly answered maybe by you and also maybe Chief Ruth. So are you saying the collaboration that you guys have and would have, would all officers be privy to receiving some information in regard to mental health? When they go to a call, they would understand or recognize, should I say, that this is maybe a mental health crisis as opposed to ABC something else?
What we already have, we have a dedicated law enforcement line. We have a cell phone in our crisis office, one in our main office. Officers all have it in their phones. If they're out at a call and they have any question about anything, they simply call us and they'll say to us, you know, here's what we have going on, this is what we're handling right now. What do you think? You think this is something that we could bring the person into the emergency room? Should they be petitioned? So we're available 24/7. All the staff inside our office carry the phone and it's called a dedicated law enforcement line. So it is available to all law enforcement, correct?
Okay. So maybe I better make this a little more, would the Saginaw Police Department officers have training for maybe your facility to be able to recognize this is mental health?
Correct. Yes, I go there, you know, I go to the roll call, we do other ongoing, we did a two-hour one recently. So we're, all officers are always included in the trainings, yes.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boss?
Austin.
Pardon me?
Austin.
I'm sorry. He went to the bathroom.
Yeah.
You know what it is. Everybody's awake.
Councilwoman Silva, she kind of touched on the question that I was going to have. This is, before we have equipped our vehicles with iPads for mental services in the car, it's a different type of service that we provide when the officer is there. But what I'm hearing right now, this is the closest thing that we're getting to actually having a mental health person in the vehicle with our officers because of that dedicated phone line and the training.
So Crisis Connect. You're talking about our program Crisis Next. So in addition to our Crisis Intervention Service, we also have what we call MRSS, which is Mobile Response and Stabilization. You call us, our staff will go right out there. If the officers call us, we can either go on the iPad, the officers call us, we are able to connect with whoever the citizen is they're working with. And our goal for the officers, we know they might have five calls backed up. So what we try to do is if that's a mental health case, to take the case. We, if it's someone who could benefit from talking to a mental health staff, that call is passed right through to our staff. We have staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at our 500 Hancock office, who are available and who will go out into the community and also who will take the call from the officers as well.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that because I have ridden with our officers. Tim, I'm overdue, so I got to get ahold of you. I do want to ride with them again. I encourage my colleagues to do the same because when, when you come upon that call or that situation that's going on, it can be a range of, it can be a range of things when you get there. It can be something that's really catastrophic that you're trying to handle, or just a simple domestic violence. It matters back, domestic violence was like the number one call of the night. And you could actually have mental health issues going on with that as well. So I'm super excited about this agreement with you, and thank you for all that you're doing with our staff and our police department.
Thank you. Councilman Braddock.
Yes, I have a question. A lot of the questions I had was answered, but also too, when the, my question is now is with the response, the crisis response, if the police respond, if the person is not on your caseload or not recognized by the community health, do that service help, how could, do that service help those that's not on the caseload or that's not recognized by the community health? And how does the police help with that?
When we first started out, we only were providing the service to people who were in mental health services. Now it's wide open. Not only can we respond for any citizen the police are involved with, but then we have follow-up. The next day we call, the next day we follow up on those calls. We have what we call a high-risk list. People can arrange after that first phone call for our staff to call them every day, every couple of days, to go out to visit. So that program has really, within the last six months or so, expanded. Because if you, let's say you have an elderly person in their home that's experiencing sundowners, the police were getting called there every night. The police would contact me and say, you know, this is repeat, we're going to the same. What do we do? So connecting the person then to some services so that someone from our facilities checking on them, calling them, interacting with them, helps to reduce the number of times, you know, MMR is getting called, 911 is getting called, police are getting called. So that's really our goal, to make the original connection, but then to put the service in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just have a quick question. I'm a social worker as well, my background, but mostly with elders. So when you go out to a call and just say you go with the police, you decide you end up go, you give the client resources, did most of the time, do they accept those resources? Or do a lot of them reject the resources that you give them to help them?
Well, we started out a while ago with these tear-off sheets for the officer, for the officer to be able to just hand them the resources. So we've tried a variety of ways to engage citizens. But you know, there's so much stigma about having a mental health condition. There's so much trauma that people have gone through that, you know, having the officer be able to put the person on the phone with mental health, those resources may be, you know, better accepted or more willingly accepted coming from mental health than, you know, if they're seeing it somehow punitive or criminalizing mental health, which is something we really try to address. You know, making sure that people understand that they're not in trouble, that they're not under arrest, that our officers are really out there as a public safety net.
Right. Okay, thank you. Do you have a question? Okay.
Thank you. Could you describe your relationship or ongoing partnerships with some housing assistance providers in the area?
Okay. Well, Saginaw County Mental Health has a housing program. It's a separate program. So they administer grants and help people get into housing and sustain their housing. So we actually have a housing program. So that program exists in helping people get connected to housing and remain in housing and through housing programs, housing vouchers. Now my role, being in the emergency room, my staff, we end up being the staff that intervene when a person is, finds themselves in a homeless crisis, which is very different than just, you know, a person who is homeless and needs to be connected to housing. So our staff in the emergency room are more likely to be involved with people who are in a mental health crisis and homeless.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I just want to say thank you for what you do. I mean, we really need your services in the city of Saginaw because I noticed that when people lose hope, a lot of times they end up on dope to try to take care of the issues that they have, and we know that that has multiplied if that happens. So I want to thank you for doing the work that you do.
You're welcome. And just, you know, I wanted to say too, you have a tremendously supportive police department and administration. The lieutenants call me, Chief Ruth calls me. We have a really good communication and they're always extremely supportive of whatever we want to put in place to assist the officers.
Thank you. Councilman Astash.
10 seconds. This is a great compliment to our Victim Impact Services, which is providing, so the students that are here today too, we provide services to people that are impacted by violence, gun violence and such in the state. So this is perfect. Thank you. It's a nice, nice fit.
Thank you.
Nancy.
All right.
Nancy. So next, we have an update from our HR Director, Grace DeLeon, about the job fair we have this week.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council, City Manager, and our guest students here today. I'm excited to announce our first City of Saginaw Job, or Construction Job Fair. It's posted right here, it's March 12th on Wednesday from 8:30 to 2:30. It's open to the public. We do have students that are attending also. And I'd like to thank Councilman Balls for inspiring us to put this job fair together and sharing it on the radio the other weekend. And I'd also like to thank my office, Office of Human Resources, Public Services, the manager's office, Matt Shutnick of SGTV, Cassie Zimmerman. She also announced our job fair on the radio the other day in the Anderson Enrichment Center for hosting the event. So our goal is hosting, and hosting this fair is to connect Saginaw County residents with employment opportunities, ultimately strengthening the local economy with helping vendors find and hire top talent for their workforce. Secondly, we aim to provide an educational opportunity for Saginaw students, allowing them to explore local career options, engaging directly with employers, and refine their communication skills. Additionally, some students may even secure summer employment opportunities through this event. And we have over 200 students coming from the Saginaw Career Center. I think we have like 170 in the morning and 170 in the afternoon. So it's going to be a lot of, a lot happening that day. For the students here today, I encourage you to take advantage of events like this. It helps to polish your communication skills so that you're ready when it's time to find the ideal job that you're looking for in your future. I've never imagined I'd be working here with the city of Saginaw for 25 years. I've been working in HR for 24. It's a great place to work. It's a great place to grow, to have a career. I have the weekends off. I get paid 13 holidays. I earn 264 paytime off hours a year, and it's just an amazing place to work. And I encourage you to watch our website periodically because we have jobs all the time posted on there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Councilwoman Silva?
Oh, just real quick. Do you know personally, out of the entities that are going to be there, are any of them hiring on the spot?
I don't know if they're hiring on the spot, but I do know that they all have some positions. I know Saginaw County is hiring right now for their summer work at the parks, mosquito control things. I know we have, we have job openings. We usually have an actual interview that's scheduled at a later date. But there'd definitely be a lot of jobs available.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Grace. And then the last presentation we have was requested by Councilman Balls, Saginaw County High School Fire Academy update, and it's going to be presented by Fire Engineer Cody Beaver, who's our lead instructor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of City Council and City Manager. Thank you for having me today. My name is Cody Beaver. I'm a fire engineer with the city of Saginaw. I'm also the Vice President and Treasurer of Saginaw Firefighters Level 102, and the main reason I'm here is because I'm the lead instructor of the Saginaw County High School Fire Academy. I wanted to share a quick update on what we are now in year three. So for those that don't know, the Saginaw High School Fire Academy is a collaboration between the Saginaw Career Complex, Delta College, and the City of Saginaw Fire Department. It's available to Saginaw County juniors and seniors as a dual enrollment option. Upon successful completion, they will earn free college credit, 12 college credits, and they will be certified to the firefighter one and two level, the exact same credentials that each one of us have in the department. So they will be able to hit the ground running as soon as they successfully complete those examinations. This will offer the student a competitive advantage going into the workforce upon high school graduation as either a volunteer, paid-on-call, or full-time career firefighter. The why. Saginaw Career Complex, Delta College, and the Saginaw Fire Department are committed to preparing young adults to enter the workforce with a skill set that allows them to function in high-stress situations, work as a team, learn to resolve conflict, and most importantly, apply the pairing of their technical fire service skills along with the human element to provide best-in-class services to the communities that they will eventually serve, hopefully the city of Saginaw. This is a county collaboration. Right now, what we're doing is we are having them with us at the downtown Delta campus on Mondays and Tuesdays for lecture, and then at our Training Tower just across the roadway here on Wednesdays and Thursdays where they will practice hands-on training. And on Fridays, what's significant about the Fire Academy that I didn't get to go through and many other of us that have been through the Michigan Fire Academies before is they get to job shadow on Friday afternoons with this list of different fire departments in the county. So we have the city of Saginaw, Buena Vista, Bridgeport, Burcharan, James, Richland, Titibowasi, and actually, we have three Bay County students, and I will talk about why that happened later on in here. So that's our school schedule, Monday through Friday, typically in the afternoons. It goes from about noon until about 2:15. Growing in demand. So this year, we have 13 students. The third year of this program going on. This is 116% increase from its inaugural class three years ago. This could have been the fourth, but a lot of that was delayed due to the COVID pandemic, so got a little bit of a late start on that. But as I mentioned in the previous slide about the three Bay County students, the BAISD, the success of this program has spawned a similar high school academy in Tuscola County. I imagine that the- I imagine that the success of this program will eventually lead to Bay County having their own program as well. And I'm very, very proud to be a part of the pivot in that movement. We are promoting diversity and homegrown talent. Of the 13 students in this year's class, four are female, make up 30% of the roster for this year. This marks a 20% increase from last year's class. We had one student, female, last year in a, in a group of 10. Very successful, very bright. Most of the females are my better pupils because they pay attention better, but and ask questions when they don't understand, so. Our lone city resident this year and student is a female and plans to apply to the Saginaw Fire Department upon completion of the Fire Academy. And we are more than thrilled and excited to see what she may bring to, to our department and the community as a whole. Right now, we are actively recruiting for future academies within the county with a focus on schools in the city. So we have the one out of the 13, and I know that a lot of the questions might be is how are we going to be getting more? I will say, I think that a lot of the, the, the schools coming together and uniting that caused a little bit of delay in trying to make all the students comfortable within that new school. So, and we've been very fortunate that in the last year, we were able to create a position in the fire, in the, the fire department side, a community engagement coordinator. And one of that person's responsibilities will be actively recruiting. And what better way to promote our program that we collaborating with than to have him going into the schools and getting a glimpse on what firefighters do. I know that in January, I was able to spend two full days at the Career Complex with all the county high school sophomores that are getting into that, that level where they can start examining different technical schools for them in the later years of high school. And I was very, very raw and real with a lot of those students. I told them the good, the bad, the ugly, the good, great, and grand about being a firefighter and how it's more than just fighting fires, it's serving the community. It's about being professional problem solvers. You can't put a price tag on that, even though they always ask what the pay is. Success story. Earlier last year, we had, I had one individual who started the year. His parents were actually former police officers in the city of Detroit. And he had a whole, not a whole lot of interest in being a firefighter. He wanted to either join the military or go into law enforcement. And he was very adamant that, you know, it was senior year of high school, he wanted to do something fun. And I took a lot of ownership in that, with that opportunity to spread some influence and kind of share how great it is to be a firefighter, the greatest job in the face of the earth. And I'll argue anybody that wants to go toe-to-toe with me about it. And then about halfway through that, the, the, the academy, he started asking a little more questions. You know, what's it like? What do you do? Do you really get to just work out and go on these calls? And yeah, that's part of it. It's a hard job, though. It's a hard job. And you got to take care of yourself. You got to take care of yourself with your head and your heart, you know? So we're big on the, the mental health, too. Anyway, he graduated. Summer goes by, I'm getting a phone call in the middle of the summer, and he says, hey, I, I applied for the job, and I don't know. And he's 18, just turned 19. And of course, for the next couple of months, I would be getting phone calls multiple times a week. Hey, do you know about my application? I'm like, no, I don't. Did you put it in? Did you take the test? And he's like, yeah, I passed that. I passed this, I passed the physical agility, I passed the background. I'm like, okay, well then just wait. Right, that's the, the joke about government jobs, right? Hurry up, wait, hurry up, wait. Right? Never ending. Anyway, November comes, and he was hired on full-time. And he is now five, six months into his probationary period. And I think he's going to be a great asset to our organization. So that's pretty much all I have. The next slide for questions. While I do have the floor, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge a Saginaw United High School student, Mike Baldwin, who became, recently became the first ever state champion for, in the school's history by winning the Division II State Championship for Wrestling last weekend at Ford Field. As the father of three young wrestlers myself, I know how hard it is to win. And for him to win the state champion is nothing short of phenomenal, so.
Thank you.
So, any questions for me on the Saginaw County High School Fire Academy?
I thought you were going to say that he, that he applied to be a firefighter.
I know.
Well, we love, we love to have him, so. I don't, I do know a lot of athletes tend to gravitate toward this program, but we are inclusive. And we want, we want folks from all, all sorts of backgrounds.
Well, you, you didn't mention how many days that the firefighter work a month? How many days they?
Oh, yeah, no, no, the, the nine days a month, they, 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 I mean, they thought that I was crazy when I said nine 24-hour days a month. You know, that's 21 days off a year, I mean, a month, right? So for all these young leaders out there.
That's right.
I'm not going to try to throw a recruiting pitch, but I will tell you that between now and, and the end of high school, you're going to change your mind a billion times. I promise you, I've all, we've all been there. But if I can give you any advice, three things. Be a good employee, be accountable, and most importantly, be a good human being.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, first of all, for your presentation. I had to step off for a minute, so I'm going to ask this question, hoping you didn't already answered. But what, what things do you have in place in regards to promoting diversity? You know, are there particulars? Do you have some line-by-line things in regards to promoting diversity in your department?
A lot of the things are going to be word of mouth. So a lot of that's going to be going into the schools and basically telling this, this story, right? We started, the very first academy had six students, and there was two of them in there, two, two females. And we've had multi-ethnicity students all over the place. So just explaining that to them, that, that's going to be one of our primary objectives. But, you know, I know I was very, very fortunate to sit with a group of Saginaw United students on that career day at the Saginaw Career Complex. And that conversation kind of went a little bit differently than a lot of the other students that had come from other schools. And I talked about the importance of serving within your own community and how this program bridges that opportunity for you to have those kind of opportunities upon graduating high school. So it's, it's a lot of, I don't have an exact formulated formula. It's kind of trial by night, fly, shoot from your hip type conversations. But we are very much involved in promoting diversity. You know, but a lot of fire departments nationally are, do, are having recruitment misfortunes where they're trying to really, we're trying to, you know, go back to the drawing board on how we are going to get this message out to everyone, so.
Do you think it'd be beneficial to the department to possibly come up with some different pieces in regards to this particular area to help you all?
I absolutely do believe that. And, and, and I think about that, the history of Saginaw Fire Department is in the 80s and 90s, there were, 30% of the, I forget, but, you don't know the plate number for how many females we did have? But I do, I do know that we had, the, the, the City of Saginaw had about, I want to say 10% of our workforce were females, against a nationwide average of 4% in, in the 90s. So that will create its own success story in itself, too. And I know that we, as the presentation regarded, you know, we are closing the gap with diversity by having more and more females take part in this academy, so.
I think just generally, with regard to both the fire service and the, the police department, but the fire service in particular, early 2000s, you probably had over 100 people sign up to take the test or more routinely. Now, sometimes it's 30. Or fewer, right? And fewer people passing. So if you know, that's why they want to get involved with the youth, they come out of this program ready to be hired. Which is a big, big benefit. Because the, the task, people aren't as interested in it as they used to be. The test isn't easy. The physical fitness agility, a lot of people aren't prepared for. So this type of class gets them ready for that and, and helps get them certified. So it's a big benefit. So if you know kids that are going to Saginaw schools, help encourage them to go through this, even just for the experience.
It's hard work, you know? If anything else, it teaches what their limitations are. And then we make sure we break them down and tell them that there is no limitations, right?
And this, and this program was started, I think, before Chief Hausbeck was chief. He was really helpful in setting this up. Even before that, we had a DICE program that was directly with the, I think it was in Saginaw schools, wasn't it? So been trying to get out there and the individual that, at the fire department, the community engagement officer, I think that will be helpful, too.
We have Councilman Braddock.
Oh, yeah. My question is, um, just real simple. Is there a maximum student, you know, what's the maximum student you can have in your classes?
Well, we almost ran into that. We were, you know, talking with Chief Hausbeck at the beginning of the year. We, we, we had 15 and more wanted to come in. So we're, we're figuring out. I actually have a request in with Delta College now to, in the SEC to figure out if we might have to do a morning and afternoon session moving forward. So I, it's, it's growing, you know, beyond the hands of just me running it. So there's going to be a lot of players here soon that are going to be taking part in this. And hopefully it prospers. I know it will.
15 is the full class?
15 would be a full class. You know, as, as I said, like, that's about the, the, about the maximum ratio that we could probably have for student to instructor. I know the state of Michigan fire training like, doesn't even like more than one to five. But we also have assistance for those instructors on those practical, hands-on days. It's, it's easy to teach 15 students lecture because, you know, it's death by PowerPoint. And, you know, you got to stop and trick them with some pop quiz, you know, questions. Try to keep them on their toes. But yes, 15 is so far the highest number that I've, I've heard of so far, so.
All right, we got one more question here.
Absolutely.
I've been to a few of the graduations, so kudos there. But when you speak of diversity, do you have any numbers in regards to people of color? Because as, as I sit there, I was really happy that the young people were there. But I also felt a little sad that it wasn't more female and more persons of color.
I do agree, I do. Last year, we had a female of color that was successful in the graduation. And I think she's doing some great things right now in the college. I don't know if she wanted to continue out the fire service, but she, again, was one of my star pupils. And I do know the first year, we did have a gentleman. He was a junior at Arthur Hill at the time that completed that academy. But, you know, again, got to get this word of mouth. And I'm, I'm hoping that even I can get some assistance from you by, by promoting this program so we can create good public servants for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the City Manager?
I just got one comment. I have a grandson that went to Saginaw schools, and he, he done worked at two firefighter, two fire departments in Eckhart, now he's in Fisher's, Indiana. And I'm trying to get him back to Saginaw.
Well, we'll take him, all right?
He said you won't take him.
Why not?
Cost of the pay.
There might have to be some adjustment, but.
Right, 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 right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
That's it, yeah.
Madam Clerk.
Questions for the manager?
Oh, did you? Are you? She has a question. Okay, go ahead.
I have, I have several questions, so feel free, if, if there are other council members who have questions to do, you know, two at a time. So my questions are regarding the homeless, homeless encampment and clearance that happened about a week ago by several city staffers. I just have some clarifying questions so that I, I, I think there was an understanding that we did not want to repeat that situation, that we want to use it as a learning experience. But in order to learn from it, I think there's just some more information that I would like to be in understanding of so that we know when we're addressing solutions that they are indeed solutions. So my first question was, who at the city made the decision to clear out this encampment? And at what time was that decision made?
You know, I don't know if I want to identify specific employees in, in any kind of event like this. So there has been an emphasis, I think, from council over the years that when, and I'm going to somewhat, I think, disagree with you in, in the phrasing because the staff did not say, we're going to do a homeless encampment clear out, okay? That was not their intent. They didn't keep anyone out. People did re-enter the site, I believe, that night, at least after the, the items were cleaned up. So when, anytime, I mean, repeatedly, we've had people come to council, I think that other council members can confirm, about various debris throughout the city. So the staff have been really focused on that and getting it cleaned up as quickly as possible. So they're pretty, they're, I think, they have the ability to mobilize and do a cleanup. So I don't think that they had any kind of, you know, impetus for, for necessarily clearing a homeless encampment. They looked at it as a, as cleaning up, you know, a site like they typically would. They went out there pre and they did, they did find people and talk to them. But I think, so with this occurrence, are there ways that we could better do it and identify these things? Yeah, I think so. This is, to my knowledge, the first time that an issue like this has occurred. So what do we want to do? We want to align our services. And a lot of that is communication internally. And so when we go out to the site, a site like that, how do we determine if it's dumping or if there are people staying there or whatever the incident is? And then what are our next steps after that? So we're working on that at this point. I think right now, if, if something happened again, we would not do, you know, not go out there immediately, but come back, communicate with our staff, with all the staff that's available. Because we do have various services and we have connections, like with Ms. Johnson. So that's where we're at right now with that process. We'll work through and streamline a definitive process. We don't want to, you know, slow down anything because a lot of, you know, the areas that are cleaned up are dumping. So we want to make sure we're not impacting people negatively, but we also want to be responsive. So it, there's a balance there.
Okay, so it was my second question then. In our initial communications on this, you said that there were two staff who went out on Friday, which was the 28th, I believe, of February, identified that there were six people at this site. And then they were issued note, notice to clear, or rather issued some kind of notice that the staff would be coming and clearing the items on a Monday. So I'm not sure how in this instance, is that, is that an incorrect assessment? Because it sounds like what you're saying is in this instance, it wasn't identified that it actually was a homeless encampment. But it seems like that was clear when the staffers were sent out there on Friday.
Initially, but again, I don't think that they, you know, I don't think that they went through the process of thinking, this is, this is a homeless encampment, what services can we do? I think their, because of the typical activities that they do, I think their process was, okay, we've received some comments or complaints, we're going to go out and clear this place. Oh, there are people here, they notified them and thought they gave them enough time. I don't think they even had the, and let me back up a second, too. Because this is where we get into, this is why we have a contract with Nancy to help provide services. Because city staff that are not trained in mental health, substance abuse, and other issues oftentimes are the first, first contact. And we recognize that years ago with our police department, this is a national issue, we recognized it here with our police department, which is why we started working with Nancy. Now, to my knowledge, this is the first time an incident like this has happened with environmental and some of our streets clean up. So now we recognize this is a potential issue here, so how do we address it? How do we connect those services? So that's what we're in the process of doing or trying to do. I can't remember what, circling back to your question, but that was kind of a tangent.
Councilwoman Teller.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, but I also just want to kind of speak on that a little for clarity possibly. Because I also spoke with you about it, we, you know, communicated back and forth. And I'm waiting, anticipating that, the meeting. And because definitely a learning, a, a learning piece right there for everyone, you know? And I think, I, I don't think, and I would hope not, I don't think city staff or any- And I think, I don't think, and I would hope not, I don't think city staff or anyone else involved intentionally, you know, set out, "Hey, I'm hoping, you know, well, we're gonna do this or we're gonna do that, we're gonna make their life miserable today." You know, I, I know that that wasn't the intent, but someone looking in, or maybe these particular homeless people, maybe didn't feel that. So, I think when persons come to the table, the persons that would be important, and maybe that is not the word I should use, in regards to a particular situation like this, comes together, put their heads together, say, "Hey, this is how this is to be handled. This is, you know, so things can go smoother if this happens or needs to happen in the future." Because you're not only looking at our homeless citizens, you also have to think about our, our citizens that are not homeless, you know, because they have some stake in here, too, you know? So, it's, it's a lot, you know? You have to think of safety, you know, it's, it's just a lot, you know? Once you sit back and think about it, it's not, it's safety for the homeless persons, it's safety for the persons that are not homeless. So, we have to just look at it and be open to what's our next, what's our steps? What do we do? How do we do these particular things? So, that was my take on that, but.
Yeah. And we're happy to meet with any, you know.
Whenever you get a meeting.
Ms. Mar Sylvia mentioned, she wants to, we're gonna have a meeting to talk about some of the issues and some of the item, you know, services that are available and, you know, primarily, you're looking at aligning all of those. So, I mean, if, first, and I'll mention this as well, so you do have to think about safety for everyone involved and primarily, yes, you're thinking about people who are staying there. I don't wanna get into all of the items that were found there, but definitely issues for personal safety, for other people that go through there, children that might, I mean, children walk those tracks a lot of times and things like that, multiple fire pits or fire sites, and I'll tell you, that night, we, we know that people returned because the fire department responded to a brush fire at that site. So, that, how do you align all of these safety issues and education, providing those services? It is, it is a learning experience. I'll tell you, I've been here for a long time and this is the first time that we've ever had this. Typically, there's, these, these kinds of events aren't aligned. So, the community development, Yolanda's area, I'm not sure, community services, they work with the homeless prevention council. They will go out to different events, but they're not, they're not directly in communication with environmental services or streets.
Child and kids area.
Yes. So, how do we make sure that, that they are and when this happens? And, and also, the other organizations in the consortium, also, how do they, how do we engage their services to get back? So, those are definitely things that we're working on and it's not, not always easy and sometimes things happen, but I do think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to, to learn and, and make sure we are doing the right thing.
Councilwoman Seals.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Yeah, you got two questions, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't have to, but go ahead on.
I thank you, Tim, for explaining that and being transparent on our growth and where we need to grow as a city. And I appreciate the council people here, your commitment to, to the change and that we need here in the city. But I believe that it's really crucial that we foster collaboration as a council. Misinformation was presented via social media and what I mean by that is, before we present information out about our city, we need to do our homework, people. And I'm talking to city council, talking to us. And so, what this does is when we put things out there, you guys, it creates unnecessary division within our community. And so, I received a lot of calls about things that was presented via social media. So, the, the division comes between not only the city council, but it comes within our staffing, too. So, we need to be mindful of what we're portraying out in our community without having these discussions first and also discussing with Tim so that we will have full information before we post and before we put information out there that doesn't house an entire thought process between all of us, okay, as, as a city leadership. We know we have these concerns and we know that we need to do our due diligence in collaborating as a body, but when we fail to do this, you guys, and fail to present accurate and shared goals, it, it prevents us from moving forward as a city and it causes division not only within our city, but within our council. So, we gotta stick together as a team. As Tim said earlier, I looked up some different entities that can help out. I think you said the, there was the Saginaw County Consortium, but I found out that United Wayden now was the lead organization for that. And we can get together, Tim, and talk about how we can involve them into this process, but other than that, I just wanna ask city council, can we please, before we begin to go outside of ourselves, we need to keep this in-house so that we can work out our own situation before we bring in our community and involve and create division amongst our, our city and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody, hold on. We're gonna start with Astash.
Okay, thank you. Really good conversation, by the way, and thank you for those comments, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Seals. You're right about the social media aspect of it. We all love social media. It gets a lot of news out there, but it also creates speculation. Not going into different terms, when people will post something, really don't know what's going on yet, and then all the speculation starts and the comments, and that's, that's hard to keep up with. So, but also, Tim, I wanted to, and by the way, too, I talked to the city manager, I know Councilwoman Hammond and Councilwoman Sylvia did, but I also had talked to him in person, I'd stopped in the city hall. And we also talked about the, the legality of this, 'cause I, you're right, we gotta figure out how to, to work with this, 'cause this was a first for the city, and I'm gonna touch on that real quickly on, on another comment, but it was, it is MDOT and if you look at the map, that is state land and MDOT in the state is, that's something that is illegal because of the various things that can happen, like the fire that was started and that, if that brush fire was to take off and not caught, there's homes there, businesses in an expressway, you know what I mean? And that, that is a dry area of our city. So, with that said, the safety issues were, were important for me, too, but also, the, the important part of this is, is that we've, the encampment was a first, but working with homelessness in our city is not. And we have, in the past, done what are called sweeps. So, we go through the city and we're looking for homeless individuals to provide those services to them, mental health, if that's needed, and try to get them relocated. And I think in this particular instance, if we wouldn't have used the word cleanup, but relocation, that would have created a different narrative, especially on social media, but it, we basically were cleaning up the debris, not the people. And I want to make that one hundred percent known, that was not the case. So, I did do a little more research on this, too. I, I mean, I work daytime running at IT, but I did do some research for the city of Detroit, right? 'Cause you have a large municipality and they do have, and it looks like, without doing more research, I just searched for the words homeless in their city ordinances, but it looks like there might be some, whoever's gonna work on this, there might be some other possibility to look at Detroit, which is a large municipality with suburbs. Yeah. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Braddock.
I think that, I'm more a statement than a question, though, far as this homelessness. I think we need to address homelessness in our, in our city. I think that is, I don't have no exact numbers, but I believe that the homelessness population is growing. I'm just seeing more and more people. I think our city need to address far as a day shelter. I think we, we need to probably come together and look at a possible day shelter in our community. We have a lot of, you know, individuals who, you know, migrate around the city, you know, hanging out with their own personal belongings, you know, and so you have those people that have their own personal belongings with no place to stay. And so, we have to, we, I, I think we got to look at some prevention, you know, we always, we got the intervention and our intention, but I think we need to look at some prevention. And I think our city is due for like a day shelter. People are sensitive to homeless males, you know, I mean insensitive to homeless males, they're more sensitive to women and children. But I think we have, when it comes to crime prevention as well, you know, we have to look at the crime prevention and safety and our community health. So, I think we have to look at something to, to kinda, you know, help with this cause that we have, you know, far as with homelessness. And I think that's the bigger picture than the actual cleanup, 'cause we don't, we want our city to look good, we want our city to, you know, but less, less, I think that's together, like you said, we need to come together and, and be careful on how we address social media as a board and a council. That's it. That's all.
Councilwoman Wiggins.
Okay. City manager, it's just a quick question. Would you make sure I'm included on whatever those meetings are so that, you know, we can come up with some kind of tangible solution?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have more if we need to have them. So, we have, you know, a limited number of people can be in each one. But it's just hearing some of the comments, too, I think it would be good not only for staff, but also for council to be, you know, informed about all of the resources that are available, because when, you know, hearing, talk about different things, I know there are a lot of smaller organizations that do provide other assistance as well, that maybe we don't, we don't think about as much transitional housing and re-entry programs and stuff like that. Also, I'm glad you asked me because I do, I do want to interject that the students need to leave at about two fifteen.
Okay.
I have to leave now, so.
Councilman Barack.
Yeah. I really didn't wanna comment on this subject, but in a way, it's kinda touching my heart because I have known people that lived under the bridge. I've engaged them. I celebrated thirty-eight years of sobriety, March the third.
Congratulations.
One of the guys that went to meeting with me was staying up under that bridge. And sometimes I would see him at the local store and he'd be begging for money to get drinks and sometime I would give it to him, sometime I wouldn't give it to him. After I quit giving it to him, and all of a sudden, now he has four months clean right now and he's staying under the bridge and sometime he didn't want to be into the homeless shelters, anything like that, because they didn't allow him to drink or do his drugs in there. So, some people that stay there, they don't want to live in the public housing because they don't want nobody telling them what to do when they come to them using alcohol and drugs. So, we have to be real careful on how we wanna protect people that's not necessarily looking for the protection that they may need. I mean, these people have left family members and left them alone, their loved ones, and have no intentions of being around them anymore because they would prefer to have alcohol and drugs in their life. So, we can't beat up the city for trying their best to do what's best for the city and try to do what's best for the citizens at the same time. In the program of Alcohol Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, Cocaine Anonymous, sometimes it's the tough love that helps somebody to break them up from the cycle of using again. And one thing about this, the trauma of alcoholic and drug addicts, that the stigma and the situation they put their family in is generational. So, we don't need to keep on having generational issues with alcohol and drugs in our community. So, we got to do something sometime and sometime it seem like it's tough, but sometime we need tough love for our individuals that we really love the most. You know, and I thank God that this guy has come back to the meetings and hopefully he'll get his family back one day. But we can't beat up on the city for trying to make sure that the city is safe and that we not have people setting fires under the bridges in situations like that or, or end up harming other people because they don't have the alcohol and drugs that they want. So, I'm, I'm gonna say that and then I would like to call for the question.
Thank you.
There's no motion.
No, okay, good.
I'm just, I'm gonna make a quick comment and then.
Make a motion.
All right. So, I just wanna say I did get several calls from my Latino community as well. They've been going down there, talking to the citizens that have been living under the bridge. I mean, it concerned me, 'cause like I said, I've been in social work for over fifteen years. I've removed kids from homes, I've been in drug situations, so I get it. I see both sides of the fence, I'm always fair. I've been sick all last week, but it bothered me, this is my community, this is where I, you know, sleep, play, eat, work. And I did go down there. I went down there twice. I went down there right after I got those calls. I went looking for people, I observed my surroundings, there's houses right there. I don't know if there's children that live there, but I know if my kids were there, I would be worried, you know? So, there's both sides of the fence. I went down there again, 'cause it was eating me up, I was looking for people, didn't find nobody, you know? So, you know, it is a learning experience and that's, that's great. Social media can always blow things up. I actually know the guy that originally posted it, 'cause he works down in that area. So, I get it, so it was probably bothering him, too, that they were in his territory. But, and I, I know some of the workers that were down there. So, I seen firsthand some of the stuff that, that was cleaned up as well. So, I see both sides of the fence and, you know, it's just a learning curve for all of us, you know, to do better. Mostly, as you can see, all the council members are all concerned, so going forward, we're gonna put our best step forward, find out the resources. I'm glad Nancy, you know, she's, most of the time, they accept the resources, but a lot of these people are grown. They're set in their ways. When you're thirty-five, nobody can tell you what to do. Sometimes at eighteen, I know, 'cause I was eighteen once, you couldn't tell me what to do, I'm grown. So, we'll, we'll learn from this, move forward and figure out a better solution, how to handle this and make everybody happy in the situation. I know it's not always the easiest. I work with them daily when I do go down. I'm actually the vice president of the East Side Soup Kitchen, where a lot of them people go. They rather go there because they can eat and leave. You go to the city rescue mission, they have a plans that you have to follow, rules, you have to attend church. People don't like structure sometimes, they don't want those rules. So, I've seen there, I used to teach there. So, I've been in my community, I know the population. My dad actually bought home, one of the guys that was looking for work that stands out there many years ago as a kid, and he just wanted to work and eat and that's what he did. He ate at the table with us, with my family. Did he harm nobody? No. He just wanted to work and eat and that's what my dad did. He bought him home, he ate with us and he went back and did whatever he did. But, you know, this is real life, this is what happens. Everybody is one paycheck away from being homeless. I've slept in my car with my kid. It's an ugly thing to do. You don't know until you're in those positions, you can't predict what, what people are thinking or what they're gonna wanna do. But just know that there's people out there that do love you and care and that's all I wanna say. And we'll call the question.
There's no motion.
Oh, that's what he.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, call for the motion.
There's report, right?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
The manager's self.
You can ask if there's any other questions or in the matter.
Okay, any other question, okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Tim, I wanted to know, in regards to the Narcan, are there any trainings or specific trainings in regards to just maybe lay citizens, learning how to administer that, signs of maybe overdosing or something like that? 'Cause I was kinda thinking about that when I was reading some of the stuff in regards to Narcan and then I have another question.
I'll ask Chief and his staff deal with that. I think it's, it's intended to be easy to use, but spotting the overdoses is different.
Extremely is easy, sticking your nose and hit the button. Tell there is to it. You see somebody that looks like they're passing out, give Narcan. Even if they're having a heart attack, doesn't matter, Narcan's not gonna hurt them. I'm not a healthcare professional. But Nancy was very instrumental. Nancy Johnson was very instrumental in bringing that to our department about ten years ago and she does train on that and that's something that we can always do, is set up some training. You can go online, YouTube, there's training all over the place. But it's really easy to administer. Very easy. And you can get Narcan anywhere. If you need Narcan, go down to our police department, the door's locked, it'll be outside on the blue mailbox, sitting right there, so you can grab some, twenty-four seven.
Okay, thank you.
The health department has training, too.
Right, oh, okay, okay. See, 'cause I thought it was a needle and I'm like, "Blah." I ain't saving nobody's breath.
It's a nasal spray, yeah. But to Councilwoman Mar Sylvia's point, I think it goes back to a question that we received about some of the training at the fire department and why they, why they needed to be trained with Narcan or need to carry it, but it is because they respond to cardiac calls. A lot of the cardiac calls are related to opioid overdoses, so they, they do carry it and administer it now in addition to responding to cardiac calls.
Okay, thank you. So, it's two fifteen now, the students have to, to leave. Thank you, guys, you're dismissed.
Thank you, guys, you're dismissed.
Thanks for coming, guys.
When you guys get involved in your city council one day, make sure you guys send us a note and let us know where you are.
Some other question. Are we waiting till they walk out?
Uh, she has a question down there, but I think we need to wrap it up soon.
But I still, I still wanna be able to ask my question as a councilperson.
Please, yeah.
Hurry for what? I wanna ask my question. Okay, uh, my other question is, I was concerned when the young lady wanted to speak, and I've thought about this before. Um, can we look at maybe possibly changing, and I don't know if that comes from here, comes from up here, possibly changing the way we sign our citizens and others up in regards to speaking or addressing council? You know, if maybe we, uh, maybe consider, uh, them signing up the date of, you know, just at, like some of the other meetings, and I know we are Saginaw, but, you know, signing up, uh, when they come into the meeting or something like that. I know it has to go through, you know, certain things, but I mean, it's something that the council could possibly think about in regards to, uh, changing the way our citizens come and address the city council. So that was not really a question, but maybe a statement, and thank you so very much.
Okay, then we have, currently, come in.
Yes, thank you. Um, did the city need permission from MDOT to go and, and clear that encampment?
No.
So they weren't notified?
I don't know if MDOT was notified, but we have a contract with MDOT to do services on MDOT property.
Thank you, and I ask because there, um, I contact, I connected with the, um, coalition, Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness, and the person who I talked to actually served on, uh, as a local legislator in a different community, and they work proactively with MDOT, and MDOT actually has policies about specifically homelessness encampments and how to deal with them.
Well, they, it's interesting you said that, because we couldn't get them.
You couldn't get a hold of MDOT?
No, they said that they didn't have a policy.
MDOT said they didn't have a policy?
Correct.
I worked specifically, so, all right, uh, I worked, I mean, I'm not gonna defend MDOT, I don't talk to them, but, um, what I was told is that they work specifically with certain communities proactively. So if MDOT statewide doesn't have a policy, then what I was told is they developed a policy with certain communities for homelessness encampments, where they were actually, as MDOT, able to access emergency housing vouchers through the state and through the state budget for homeless encampments in certain communities. So that's why I asked that question. Um, but also, uh, I, I, it's, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a, um, an ignorance of best practices in this instance, first time issue, and a commitment and a willingness to move forward with best practices in, in the future. Um, and again, I, I, we don't, we don't clean up, we don't clean up homeless people. And when you move their stuff, that's clearing a homeless encampment, 'cause if you take away their stuff and you throw it away, that's the stuff they rely on for survival. So I, I'm very particular about that language, because we do have a community here, and, um, Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia and I were at Gideon Christ Church, who did have a, a warming center. Um, and we did have conversations with folks there about broken trust, and when Nancy spoke about, um, trauma and about stigma, um, I think that what happened was, was a result of, of those kind of beliefs and, and an action of that, and that's not what our community values in Saginaw, I'm happy to say. We actually have a broad-based community of amazing nonprofit service providers who deal with homelessness every day, and, and a, and a much more compassionate public than most communities are working with. Um, so I think there is a lot of room for improvement, and I am excited to, to be a part of these meetings moving forward, um, because I think there's, there's a lot of folks around who are familiar with best practice, so. Um, do you know, uh, in, in terms of future meetings, would we be willing to, um, could we look into specific line items concerning, uh, supporting warming centers?
Through the city's budget, you're talking about?
Yes.
I mean, if, I guess if council wants to consider that.
Yeah, um, and that's my second question, so I appreciate it.
Councilman Ash.
Yeah, I just have a comment about what we're talking about right now, um, Councilwoman Hammond, and whoever was gonna sit in on these meetings. I think the best way to go about this is to formally commit, create a committee of up to four council members. That way, under boards, commissions, and community reports, you can come back to this council and talk to us about what you've done, what you're doing, and then any policy that you'd wanna pass, you could run it by us prior to. This is, this is, this is a bigger issue than just, than just a few things. So I, I would really say formalize a committee and work out, we've done this before, yep.
Back, backing up to the supporting services. So the nonprofits could be supported through the Community Development Black Grant Program. We, we can't necessarily provide general fund dollars to nonprofits, you know, for something that the city doesn't normally do, but Yolanda's team works with them.
If I can just jump in here, because, um, through the Community Development Black Grant Program, of which you've been invited to come and sit in, we have talked to different, uh, like muster seed, different individuals. We have community partners who deal directly with homelessness and homelessness assistance. Um, unfortunately, they weren't aware of the situation that happened this past week, and so what we've done is we've talked about it as staff, um, reached out with, to them, and talked to them, like, what should be our next steps, educating, um, everybody about the resources that are available to you. Um, so you are funding it through your Community Development Black Grant. In addition, you get Home ARP money that deals directly, is one point six million dollars that deals directly with homelessness and homelessness prevention, as well as, um, those individuals who are on the cusp of being homeless. So we do have those funds that you can also look at. So there, we are, as a, uh, city, working on the homeless, uh, issues. We are in the consortium, it's called the Consortium on Homelessness. We are part of those, that group as well, and so that's what we're planning on doing, the next steps of having meetings, talking about what we, what resources, resources are available, and what we can do to address it in the future.
Can I do some information apart from you? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, I think, I mean, I think it's a good discussion. Um, also, um, several council members have said to recognize that some people don't, don't want this help either. As you said, there's a lot of help available in the city of Saginaw. One of the things that I think the, the staff did see, and maybe it wasn't necessarily a red flag, but could have or should have been, was when people knew that city people were gonna be there, they left. They cleared out, because they don't wanna interact with those service providers. Or if they're from the, um, potentially public safety or something like that, they wanna, if they do want to interact, it's with some of these other organizations, so, um, I might, that's a kind of a key there, to get, get them involved.
I wanna comment on that, Tim, that's a really good point. It's come up a few times during the discussion, how people, sometimes they don't want help. But also, too, going back to the encampment, I, there were some pretty frigid cold temperatures, and now a friend of mine said that they did leave when it got that cold, and then they came back. But going back to the people that wanna get help, um, perfect example, yesterday, I've got a gentleman, I live a few blocks from the rescue mission, um, and a gentleman came by again for the second time, and like Councilman Balls, like he said, he wanted money, uh, but he was also hungry, so I made him lunch, and, you know, sent him on his way. But when I tried to get him help, and going back to what the manager, we talked about, he just didn't want it. I mean, I'm like, I've got Dan Streeter on speed dial, I can call the well, and which I've done for another gentleman too, and once, once we finally got housing for him, boy, it really changed his life, because he had talent, but at least he had a roof over his head, shower, and he could then focus on what, what he needed to do to get back and get a job, and then establish himself, and, and that was the well, that we actually had worked out with that, so, yeah.
Just one quick thing, I think this conversation could continue in that subcommittee. You know, because it's a lot, and this could go on, but once that committee is formed, and, you know, if people are knowledgeable, when you have knowledge, then you can bring some information to the committee. So this conversation is very good, is needed, uh, it was needed before, that, you know, but, um, I think if we, we could be all night.
Yeah, I know.
So I think if we just take it, but, I'm, no, I'm saying, I'm learning. I'm definitely learning, I think we all are learning. But I think this committee, uh, you know, once it's formed, we would have very good conversation and be able to help our citizens, you know, that need and/or want the help, you know? And you can also help a person that doesn't want help in a particular way. So I was just saying, you know, because we go on all day in regards to, you know, their situation, you know, but it's serious, you know, but...
Good conversation.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
Madam Clark.
On to the consent.
Agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGT Channel 191. Motion to approve leaving room for exceptions?
So moved.
Fifteen, ladies.
Okay. I'm sorry, what number, Councilman?
Fifteen.
And two?
Madam Clark.
Take your, um, vote on the ones that are being approved.
Okay, so...
All in favor of the...
All in favor of the motion to approve items, one through seventeen, or no?
With the, without the exception.
With the exception, with the, with the exception of two and fifteen.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved in second. Any other questions, discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye or nay? Wait, aye?
All those in favor say aye.
All in favor say aye, I'm sorry, guys.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion is approved in second.
Item number two is to approve the recommendations for the 2025 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule, that was Councilmember Hammond.
Who's gonna answer questions on this? Uh, okay, great, I have a couple questions. Um, so for this, uh, overall process, um, just 'cause I'm unfamiliar, I noticed that a lot of the objection and department replies stated that the homeowners, uh, or the person who is assessed did not respond in time, or did not, you know, process the information in time. Can you tell me a little bit about the, the process to object, um, to special lot assessments?
I, I, I don't understand the question.
I think what you're talking about is the objections, the objection period, that's set by the ordinance.
Yes, okay. And what is that objection period?
The objection period is they have to have objected in person at the public hearing or in writing by the close of that public hearing.
Okay, so do they have to physically be there, or can they send in a correspondence via email or mail?
They can send in something that's signed, because we have, you know, they have to sign it, but as long as it's reached in my office by the close of the public hearing.
Thank you so much. I wanted to add information out there. And then, um, I have questions about Saginaw County land bank properties. I'm just unfamiliar why, um, I understand why the, the lot assessments are removed from the tax rule, because it's a government entity, we can't really, and we have govern, intergovernmental agreements with them. Um, but I, I was just wondering, so why does the city go out and mow those properties? I assume they're, it's, it's upkeep, I'm not exactly sure what all the codes are, um, but if we, do we have some agreement saying, we, if we know it's a land bank property, we'll go out and mow it, and then something happens to the fees, or do we not know that it's a land bank property, and we just go take care of it, and then afterwards we find out?
They pay us to mow their properties.
The ones that are listed as single lot assessments were mowed before they were land bank properties, so the original bill went to whoever owned it.
I understand, okay.
Now that the land bank owns it, now the bill...
Yeah, the land bank owned the properties, they pay us.
Okay.
Each year, and they've, in the past, they bought us the equipment to do it, they have been paying for years for to have us mow them.
Okay, that's, that's one of the agreements I was messaging out. I know there's probably several, but we'll specify that, we'll follow up on that. Um, okay, those are my major questions, so, um, motion to approve. Oh. Okay, right, right, oh, yeah.
Any other discussion?
You need to quit drinking, it's too full, you're gonna miss it.
I, I just got a little confused, 'cause I heard you say something, you said, so once the land bank acquires, the city is still under contract to mow those properties?
Well, we get funding to mow, we obviously can't...
Right, but you still do, okay, good, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
A motion to approve?
Yep, there's a motion in second, you can take your vote.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Say it, I can't say it.
I'm gonna speak for her, boy, she's got that. She said, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
He's a professional.
Item number fifteen is to approve the proposal with Tetra Tech for three hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars for design, engineering, and programming services at the city's combined sewer, sewer overflow basins, for the water and wastewater treatment services department, wastewater treatment divisions through the instrumentation and process controls division, that was Councilmember Balls.
Thank you. I didn't see any other bids, and you said that you took this bid because they familiar with it? Did we have any other bids?
For our instrumentation work, we ride with the same contractor. So Tetra Tech has been doing instrumentation for the city for some time, I don't know how long that is, um, but we, changing the people that do your integration inside the computers can be a very, very messy process, it needs to be done intentionally, so we ride with the same vendor that we've been using for this, which is Tetra Tech, uh, that we have a lot of trust in, that their projects actually work when we push the goal.
I understand that you, you know, how you feel about what they can do, but, uh, how do, how do we know they're not, they're not sticking it to us, you know, by another hundred thousand dollars? You know, I'm just trying to find out why there's not other bids.
Because they, because while I'm very comfortable bringing them in to do the work, 'cause we know it's gonna get done right, I'm also not comfortable getting bent over either. So we're, we're looking, we're looking at that, we're trying to make sure that, that we're getting value, that those, that those numbers are what, what they need to be. If this came back with another zero on it, we're gonna go out and seek other bids. Um, so it's, it's just, we've, we've, we've used the same vendor, once you get inside those PLCs, it's very murky, very complicated stuff, and by having the same set of people do it all the time, you get a, you get a consistent product versus name changes, which are an absolute nightmare to change.
I appreciate you telling me your thought, but as a person that's supposed to be taking a look at the dollars, you gotta, you know, look from where I'm looking at too, and normally we have more than one bid, so I just, you know, and you explained to me why we don't have more bids, but, uh, I would like to see, uh, other bids on here, just to make me feel comfortable in, in, in what one person say it may cost, another person say it may cost, and maybe we can do something in between there to see if those people are, uh, owning up and up, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's just how I feel, so, and I appreciate your explanation too.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, no one else ever even, you, you never even asked any other bids?
Not on our instrumentation work.
Well, I'd say, so, part of, in, in our ordinance, professional services, it doesn't require bids to, so that you can continue this work, and I'll compare it to, so, if you, and we, in the future, if you want us to get more bids, or have our engineering firm say, hey, this, this should be the cost of it, we can definitely do that. Um, the issue when you have this type of ongoing work, and we have it in various departments, is if I'm gonna get a new bid, now I'm gonna pay the new company to learn everything the other company did in the past, and then, and then do the project, that's kind of the issue we have had when bringing other ones in, but if for future projects, you know, interest of getting this thing moving so that they can get this project done, um, in the future we can do that, if that's what council would prefer.
Well, I just, I would, I just would hope that we would be looking for the, you know, somebody else that can do it for cheaper, uh, that's just my thoughts, you know, because I understand what you're saying too, you're comfortable, you know, you're comfortable...
I just, I don't wanna come back two months from now with another quote for two hundred thousand dollars to untangle the mess that just got made, and that's, and that's why we run that way on our services.
The other municipalities that do this type of work, you know, to have this work done, you know, and I was wanting, we even talked to their vendors to, to see anything, so I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, man, maybe some food for thought, maybe you would give us some thought, but I'm giving thought to how much money we spending, so I'm just concerned.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you, I appreciate that you would take my thoughts with you and sleep on them, and maybe, uh, consider, uh, letting somebody else take a peep at this sometime and see if we can get it cheap enough, without, uh, having the council to make a motion to, uh, uh, make you guys do something like that. Maybe you can come back and tell us something one day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Pardon me.
Yes, I'd like to make a mo- make a motion to approve, uh, number fifteen.
That's it.
With the caveat that he's gonna come back and.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed say nay. Motion has been approved.
Takes us to board, commission, and committee reports.
Are there any reports? Oh.
I've got one, yeah. So I sit on the planning commission for the city of Saginaw, and we are right in the midst of the complete zoning rewrite, so if there are any people that are interested in meetings that are coming up, please watch our city website, Facebook page for you to come and have your input, so, thank you.
Bill, I have a question for you. Uh, would you be open to some materials on zoning best practices if I sent them your way? For, for.
I think that's a question for our staff, 'cause we're in the midst of it, there's, yeah, but we send it to staff, and then us as well, the planning commission.
Okay.
So we can review everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Any more reports? Madam Clerk?
Onto appointment of board, commission, and committee members.
I'm gonna ask for motion to approve one through three, leaving room for exceptions.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Madam Clerk?
Onto resolutions. Our first is certifying the twenty twenty-five Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule.
This is where we need a motion to adopt.
Second.
We're gonna move and support it, all in favor say?
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Oh. Any discussion?
Thank you, thank you. Um, so, uh, just to jump in here, this is a conversation that we've heard, uh, brought up several times, um, and this is the point to do something about it. So, under this resolution, when we, uh, so, at, by resolution, we adopt the special tax assessment rule, and in this piece is the interest rate that the city charges specifically for, for some of these repairs that go onto the assessment rule, so, sorry, I'm like working between three different things here. Um, but, uh, this, particularly the interest rate has been brought up a few times, and I know that some council members, including myself, has expressed concern that it's very high. So in this current form of the resolution, it is at eight percent. Um, so I would like to introduce an amendment to lower the interest rate on this resolution from eight to four percent. That, that is a motion.
I'm gonna second that motion.
So, now we can discuss.
Discussion.
Yeah, so, so, I, I, I see some looks of confusion here. I, I do know this was brought up a couple times, um, and I, uh, I do think that we should permanently amend the ordinance, which we could do to, you know, ma- make a motion today in another section to do that, but, again, the, the eight percent, I, I think is just too high. My, my, uh, bank charged me, what is it, five point three percent for an auto loan, so to do more than that, and it just, it just seems like a lot, especially when we are, uh, foreclosing on hundreds of properties every year. Uh, s- I, I think it's six of the properties, uh, that are on this list say land bank, which to me means that, that property actually went probably through the process or foreclosure is how it ended up at the land bank, and then, you know, we don't collect on any of those funds. So I think that this is an ongoing issue, and as costs are rising, and people come here and say, you know, this is too much money, I can't pay it, we're, the city's losing money, and we're losing population by having, you know, some of these practices that I think, again, the interest rates are just too high, and to give our citizens a break and, and possibly ease some of the strain, this financial burden for special assessments, I think it's appropriate to lower it in this instance, and then we can also, um, later reflect on, on, you know, changing that ordinance as well, um, to, to reduce that permanently. But for this year, and that's what we're talking about here, is this resolution for this year to lower that interest rate applied on these special assessments from eight percent to four percent.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, I'm looking at that, and I, um, second that motion simply because of the citizens that have came and addressed council in regards to that. That would be my only reasons, is because of the citizens, not because of me personally, or what I think. I'm thinking about the citizens, even before this new council have been set, we've had, study had, uh, persons come up and speak in regards to that. So, um, you know, if, if, if it's a way that can happen, I'm definitely gonna have to vote for that. Thank you very much.
And just to further identify, if, if y'all are trying to check this out, I, I know we went through some of these, uh, agenda items pretty quickly, this is Resolution R1, it's towards the ends of the packet, and we're looking at the paragraph where it says, "Be it further resolved that each assessment in the sewer connection rule is payable in ten annual installments, sidewalk replacements are payable in five annual installments, and the rate of interest to be charged on unpaid installment shall be eight percent," which the amendment is to change it to four percent, "per annum. Demolition, fire alarm, and nuisances of boardups, weed cutting, and yard violations are payable in one installment." So, that's the section that I'm currently looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry. Last stash. Okay, so, uh, my comments, and then also some questions for staff and for yourself, Councilwoman. Um, I work in finance. This interest rate is not being set the way you do it in, to buy a car.
I didn't hear you, I'm so sorry.
I said, this, she made a co- uh, she made a reference to our interest rate comparable to a bank, and I work in finance, and.
Right.
The way you do interest rates in a bank and credit unions is not the way that you determine, it's based on deposits as well. But, here, have we consulted with staff in the finance department, and what, so how is this rate being determined? 'Cause normally it's just for FTE that we, full-time employee hours that we're paying for, so I'm wa- I'm kinda wondering, how, what is, is this covering that? Are we gonna go backwards? Um. Well, councils, you know, as, the ordinance, uh, City Attorney Look doesn't state the interest rate, so. Right. You're setting it when, each time council sets it. So, I don't know how lo- it's, it's been the same rate for a long time. Um, right now, I think prime is seven and a half percent. Um, so.
The city clerk has some thoughts.
Sorry.
The city clerk has some thoughts.
Oh, okay, well, in a second. Um, but, you know, essentially, I would say, as long as we're getting back, I mean, you're lending money to individuals, basically, is what you're doing, the city's paying for the work, and they're paying it back over time, so as long as we get back funds that we could get back on an investment, I think we don't have an issue with changing it, so, 'cause.
I would just add that we did a little bit of checking, went all the way back to nineteen seventy-five, it's been eight percent every year, with the exception of seventy-nine, eighty, and eighty-two, when it was six percent. So it's been that way for a long time.
I'm sorry, I was.
Um, Tim, you just clued me into something else then, 'cause you said this is a loan that we're providing to the?
Essentially.
Essential loan? So if we wanna look at it from a finance perspective, you could do like, I'm gonna make a comparison to a home equity loan, a lot of times they're prime plus zero. So in this particular case, I think we'd be more comfortable in the city that whatever the current interest rate is at the time of the loan, that that would be the interest that's charged. Like you said, right now, it's seven and a half percent, and this is our money that we're lending out.
Uh, the.
Oh, go ahead.
We're, we're working, so, um, what I would say is, I, I think that it's, I think there's a financial aspect, for sure, and I think that, um, when we look at this in the long term, we can eat that out. I think for right now, we have a foreclosure crisis in the city of Saginaw, we have a homelessness crisis in the city of Saginaw, um, people are talking about being on fixed incomes, uh, and property owners came to us and said, you know, "I can't afford this." There's, I think, three testimonials, uh, in the packet about people who just said, "I can't afford this." Um, and I'm, I'm worried that when these come around, those exact same addresses are gonna be on the land bank rules, they're gonna be on the foreclosure rules, they're gonna be our right of refusal of the next year, and so I, I, I don't think that this is, it goes far enough, honestly, to address those issues, but I think it is a step that we can take and say, you know, we've heard the people who've come out and said, people have pointed the interest rate specifically, I think they're too high, and I think that when we're looking at the costs potentially for recouping versus having this high interest rate, the thing that I'm considering first and foremost is, are we being punitive, are, like, like basically, are these folks gonna foreclose on their homes? Are they gonna lose their home because of these, these interest rates? And that's, that's my concern, so, I think comparable to other interest rates that I have, if I had something that was an eight percent loan, oh my goodness, that'd be, that'd be a lot for me to deal with.
Councilwoman Seals?
Uh, Mayor Protem, I just, um, I guess I come back to the same point I made a little earlier, is that, um, I would love to be involved in the, the thought process of some council members that would like to bring this before council without, um, even meeting with the city, or, you know, having these, um, well-thought-out and, uh, already completed and thought-through decisions that are being made right now, and I don't have time to process. I cannot vote on anything like this, I will not approve it, because I have not been able to, I mean, I believe this was spoken a couple of months ago, don't bring this to the table and expect for us to vote on it today.
Right.
And to, so I would like to hear what the city manager, and, uh, to see what the staff, how that would benefit us, also, um, in just being involved in that process, and so that, um, I can make decisions, because I'm a homeowner, and I also plan to, um, move very soon within the city, possibly build within the city, if not, um, moving a- along the river front. So I would like to be a part of this process, so, other than that, making this motion today kind of, you know, removes me and people like me who wants to invest in, in, in the city. So, um, again, I, I, I think that if we wanna make a decision like that, then we all should be a part of the process, including the professionals that know about this stuff, and know how to make the decisions, and help us to make the right decisions as, as, as the leadership of the city. So I hope that we will make the right decisions today, and not move this motion forward, but we could look at it another time, so that we can come back with more information, and more accurate, and, and, and hopefully more data that will help us come together again as a council, that we can work together and not be a solo or a lone wolf, okay? So can we please keep that, like, can we please keep, stay together? That's my whole point.
Yes, Ms. Seals.
Thank you very much. Whoo, okay. Not everything, I, I, what I wanted to do is set it aside and come back to it, but I also wanted to he- hear, because I don't know if persons heard what the city manager just said in regards to that rate, and, and how it can, cannot, you know, how, what did you say? I'm sorry, can you please repeat? That it didn't really matter if it was the four percent or the eight percent? And then I would also, uh, do I put the motion now, or what? How do I do that? 'Cause I wanted to have this.
You're still under discussion of lowering the interest rate.
So I can't put a motion to?
Unless you're gonna amend that, which can get kinda messy.
Okay, I won't do that, I won't do that.
Got a question.
So, generally, this has been set by council, as the clerk said, it hasn't changed much. Um, my view of it is, is i- if we're getting, you know, this is the city taxpayers fronting dollars to individuals for a project, right? So we should get back for our citizens, a rate of return that we could get if we invested the funds. That varies, so, I mean, I can't tell you right now that four percent is good. I mean, I, I would ask, how do you deter- how did you determine the rate? Is it because that's what sounded good? Or, but I will tell you, if, if seven percent sounds high, or seven and a half, look at the mortgage rates right now. They're, and look at the used car rates, the rates are very high right now. So, you know, compare this to, if I'm a, um, if I'm a resident, and I know my sidewalk's bad, and I didn't take care of it, but I had the city contractor do it, and okay, now I'm gonna pay for it over so many five years or whatever, and now I have to pay this interest rate. If I'm a city resident that paid for it with my credit card, because I didn't want the city to do it, what interest rate am I gonna pay? If you took it upon yourself to do it, you're potentially paying, you got a personal loan or whatever as well, so, think, I, I think that some intent in setting the rate would, would be good, so that, you know, we can, the way it is right now, I guess we have a hard time explaining why is it eight percent, but would you have the same problem if you set it at any number? You know, what, was it intentionally set?
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, and the last thing is, again, this will only affect people that's purchasing, this would not affect renters, correct? I mean, as far as, I mean, their rent could go up, but as far as, this is about people who wanna purchase homes, correct?
It's homeowners that have had either a clean, you know, cleanup in their yard, the mowing, but I'm not sure what all of them, you know, might be speaking out of turn.
Weed abatement, yard cleanup.
So it's the homeowner, correct? This is the homeowner that will be affected.
It is. What we're talking about with the interest rate is specifically the ones that have installments, so the sewer connections and the sidewalks.
It's the landlord and the homeowner that will be affected, that's what I'm asking.
It's the homeowner that gets the bill.
Property owner.
Yeah.
I just want, I want the council to understand that this is not the renter that's gonna get the bill, most likely.
Gosh, stash.
A good point, Council, uh, Councilwoman Seals, because it would be the landlord that owns the property then, but, uh, city manager also mentioned something, again, when we talked about finance, and he said, "This is the citizens' money, and he could actually invest that money to make money on it, too," so that would be another conversation, whoever takes this up, with staff. So whether you're looking at prime rate or deposit rate, um, that could also help to determine this rate that we have, but it, the market fluctuates all the time, and, like you mentioned, too, homeowner repairs, I've gotta do repairs this year, too, and possibly are running at a thirteen percent that I'm gonna have to pay, so I might wanna consider a loan through the city, I'm just saying.
Don't start.
I'll take this under eight percent.
What do you, what do you need? I give you ten percent.
Okay.
But it's a good conversation, I'm glad we're having the conversation, so yes, I ag- I agree.
Yeah, good conversation. I would just like to, um, before I vote, uh, yeah, or anything, um, I would just, I would like to take that historical data that was presented and, and understand why that it went from six to eight. I think that's important, 'cause it, it, it seemed like it went down, it must've had some discussion about it, so let's, I wanna get on, I, me personally, wanna get a understand on why it's at eight percent before we actually mark it down, we gotta, you know, understand we don't affect too much when we come to that decision. That's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Hammond?
So I have some.
I haven't spoken yet.
I have.
I haven't spoken on it.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Feel free.
Thank you very much, man. I'd like to call for the question, please.
Thank you. Yes, again.
You can do that with somebody's talk.
I was recognized by the chief. Do you have some critical context?
Call for the question is our way in order.
Why was somebody who's already been recognized to talk?
Excuse me, excuse me. Once you're aware that someone does have a comment, it's improper to call for the question.
Even if I haven't spoken yet? I thought we supposed to have.
You didn't, you didn't offer discussion, you called for the question. If you had a, a question or a comment or something, then you would.
That's fine, all right.
You can't take away the right to ask.
It's, I appreciate it, it's all right. I, I did have some critical context, um, to address Councilwoman Seals' comments, I, I appreciate what she said, and, and correct, like, I don't intend to, to throw something I I appreciate what she said and incorrect. Like, I don't intend to to throw something and say, let's talk about it now and only now. Um, this came about because um I actually had a motion completely independent of the special assessment timing process that I was gonna bring about today. And I do still intend to bring about under miscellaneous business to reduce the interest rate overall for the future. Um, but as the city clerk advised me, she said, we've got a resolution today and we can set this now. So, the, why this came about today, I I didn't plan to spring it on people today. It was that I was actually planning on introducing this and it's to refer it to staff. So, having that data, having that forethought. But for today, again, we can, we can, I think it's a values question because when these, when people can't make payments and then their property gets foreclosed on, we don't collect on any of that money. So, if, well, people are coming to us saying, I cannot, I can't bear this financial responsibility, like, I can't afford this. That tells me that a lot of these people on our special assessment roles are feeling the hurt and they're telling us, I can't afford this interest rate. And so, I think that, you know, as a step to 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 hear them and to address that in this moment, that, again, we 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 had seventy-eight properties at the right of second refusal. I was told there was over a hundred and twenty at the right of your first refusal, which means a hundred and twenty, you know, home foreclosures, property foreclosures that the city's doing every single year. Um, so, I I I think that does does uh determine us to be in a crisis and that the the community has communicated a need. Um, and so, this amendment is about addressing that need today. But I hear your concerns and I agree with you. Um, and that was not my intention here today. But with the opportunity that has presented itself with just the way the time lined up, I thought we should have this amendment today to say, this year, we hear you. This is what we want to do. But later on in miscellaneous business, I do have exactly what you asked for. So, thank you.
You guys ain't got nothing to say? You can call for the question.
Call for the question.
All right, I'll. Oh, is there a second?
So, this, this first vote is just on the motion to amend.
We're calling the question.
We're calling the question first. Ms. Hammond made the motion. Does someone have a second? I'm calling the question.
I seconded. So, just to be clear, can you read the motion?
Right. Right now, you're just calling the question on the vote.
Call for the question on the vote, all in.
About iron, nay, on?
All in favor.
Discussion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Motion is approved. Okay, so, the amendment is to lower the interest rate on resolution one from eight percent to four percent. Now, you just take the vote. There's no discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Sylvia?
No.
Councilmember Seals?
No.
Councilmember Balls?
No.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember O stash?
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock?
Aye.
And Councilmember Hammond?
Yay.
You have six no and one yes. That motion is denied. So, now you're back to the main motion, um, certifying the twenty twenty-five single lot assessment tax rule was moved and seconded.
So, all in favor. I'm sorry. Now, is this where we can uh set this aside and come back to it?
You can. However, what I would caution you on is if you put it aside and then it doesn't end up getting approved at the next meeting, then you're messing with the timetable for the summer taxes. Because this, what's not paid rolls to the summer tax.
But but if we, if if I make the motion to hear this, where we can get our information and have it, have it definitely at the next meeting, would that impede that on it at all?
Should be okay as long as it gets approved at the next meeting.
Kind of motion. I would like to uh set this aside to the next council meeting.
Postpone to the next meeting?
Yes.
A second.
So, can you read it?
The motion is to postpone, um, certifying the twenty twenty-five single lot special assessment tax rule to the next meeting.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Is there discussion?
No. All in, all that are opposed or? All in favor. Please signify, aye. Are we, I'm sorry, are we saying aye to the motion?
To postponing this resolution to the next meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 Okay. Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Seals?
Nay.
Councilmember Balls?
No.
Councilmember, Mayor Potem Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember O stash?
No.
Councilmember Braddock?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yay.
You have two yes and five no on that. That motion is also denied.
All right, approving the twenty?
No, you're still, you still have to take the vote on certifying the twenty twenty-five single lot special assessment tax rule.
Okay.
This postponing was denied.
All in favor, signify, saying aye. All opposed, say nay. It's my first rodeo, guys.
All right, that motion carries.
Okay.
Uh, the second resolution is approving the twenty twenty-two Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement for the police and fire departments.
I need a motion to adopt.
So, move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk? All, all in fa, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. They don't tell you this in the script, guys. So, I'm getting old. I got bad memory. I don't know how Ms. Mayor. My first rodeo and I'm not feeling.
Approving the twenty twenty-three Homeland Security Program Subrecipient Funding Agreement for the police and fire departments.
Need a motion to adopt.
I'm sorry, there was a motion. I didn't hear the second.
Second. Yeah. All in favor, all discussion. I'm gonna need somebody with a cue card next time I do this. Okay, all, no discussion. Okay. All in, all that signify, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
All right. Final resolution is approving solely for the purpose of section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, the issuance by the MBS International Airport Commission of not to exceed seven million, six hundred thousand dollars airport revenue bonds.
I need a motion to adopt.
So, move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
On the miscellaneous business.
Are there any other motions?
I would like to make a motion.
I don't think we're at that point yet.
I would like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Oh. We just got a s- a second.
Second.
Just moved and second.
That's all right.
They can vote it down. We just shut it down.
Well, just remember how y'all did that today.
It's moved and seconded. So, you're just gonna ask for discussion.
Discussion. Is there any discussion?
And then take your vote.
Okay. All in favor, signify, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You wanna stay on?
Councilmember Sylvia?
No.
Councilmember Seals?
Yay.
Councilmember Balls?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember O stash?
No.
Councilmember Braddock?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Nay.
You have four no and three yes. That motion is denied. So, you're still under miscellaneous business.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that the council formalize a committee to oversee the reopening of Ojibwe Island tasked with securing funds, implementing, implementing safety measures and engaging community stakeholders.
Second.
Support.
That's second.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah, I thought we did.
We didn't do the committee.
Discussion.
Last, last week, meeting.
What?
City Manager, I think um the intent here is just to formally create the committee under council rule, on the, from the council.
I'm sorry, what committee process were they referring? Where we've had something started? I'm I'm confused.
We talked about it at the last meeting, but we really didn't have a committee that could work together. That way, they can work on it. And then again, they can bring back um discussion under boards, committees, and new boards.
I know there's some discussion on that. I know we had discussion, but I just like, so I wanted to formalize it so we can get this thing started and start building on these milestones on getting it open. Because the, the summer is coming. It's getting warm. And so, I wanted to move on and quit putting it off for the next month.
It's a way to get work done.
So, we got a support. So, we can.
Who had the second on that one?
So, we got a, we got a, oh, I thought you had a question. So, now we just say, um.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion. Okay. You still got your hands on it. I'm like, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Um, I I totally support that. I think that's great. I had several discussions just this week about Ojibwe and discussions just this week about forming a committee. Um, in terms of the process for forming a committee, I would like to make sure that we're, when we introduce the the bylaws and follow through that process, I want to know who gets to kind of determine what that makeup looks like and what the seats kind of are in terms of like members from the community or community groups. Because we, we can kind of decide some of that. I just wanted to ask, what's the follow-up next step from this process? So, I, I, I can draft that question to City Manager.
So, when council forms a committee like this, they don't necessarily create bylaws. This would be a committee of council members. And we've done this multiple times for various issues. So, it'll be council members. Usually when, you know, it's, this is kind of a, like a work group.
Like ARPA, kind of, we had a work group?
Similar, but we've done this with the dangerous dog ordinance and different ordinances like that throughout the years. So, typically, what we do is the mayor and staff talk about individuals who would serve on it. So, remember, we talked about another one that council wants to have today, um, to talk about services to homeless. So, we try to even it out. So, if you want to be on one, let's get various council members involved. And then that group brings back these items to all of council, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I want to do this correctly. So, I don't know if I'm, do it as a motion or as a committee.
Oh, we got, we got the motion on the floor.
Oh, you still, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I guess I'm trying to leave.
Just vote on, on Councilman Braddock's motion then, right?
Oh, I'm still, I have a question.
She had a question.
Okay.
I wanted to ask you, Tim, about that. Um, I thought in our last meeting that um we were going to look at an outside entity taking on that lead and not us doing it as a, a, as a city council. I thought that's what we said. We were going, an outside entity taking on. You were gonna look into that?
Yeah, so, I, I think you still want to have the committee for council, but that's part of that discussion. So, we, we talk about having an adopt, is the best way to do it to have an adopt a park where an entity kind of manages it and, you know, or is it, are there other options? And um, so that's what I think the committee will talk about. Uh, but that can be one of our points of discussion. I think there's a lot of different things to talk about for, for the committee.
All right. Okay, so, in regards to Jibway. So, um, as we, well, some of us know, and I know you know, that Chucky Lawrence and his group uh, were very interested. I spoke with him in detail. I don't know what happened. Did it fall? Something I don't know. Okay, because they were definitely yet interested. And if not going in that way, you know, we could be, you know, willing to go another way as long as we get the job done. All right. Thank you.
I just want to comment with um Council, Councilwoman Seals that um I think that the committee is good to oversee. Even if we do have whatever we, whatever plan that we implement, I do think it's important that the board have some oversight on it. You know, because of the narrative that was placed on, on it, on why it was closed. So, we just want to make sure that we have some oversight so we can kind of scrub out that narrative and we can move forward. And so, we don't, because, because, because that's how the public sees it. You know, how the black community sees how they shut down Ojibwe. So, I just want to make that process. And so, we can have an oversight evaluation on the process and, and, and the, the outcome. You know what I'm saying? So, we can see the success and we can, you know, point out those successes too. We already had the negative outcome. So, let's, let's get to the point where we have a positive outcome. And I think it's, it's important for the committee to sit on that so we can have that oversight.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and Council, Councilman Braddock, thank you for bringing that up because he and I have talked about that. And he made a very good point about the black community and the way they saw the closing of the park. And I told him, I said, right, the, kind of the last thing that happened in the park was a white pickup truck and a male Caucasian white guy that tore up the lawn. So, we just want to, and that gets expensive. So, all this committee can discuss all these things about keeping our parks safe, keeping our citizens safe, some control. And I think it's gonna be a great thing for us to do.
We can call the voting. Can you read it again, what?
I cannot. He will have to.
It's his, it's his motion.
So, I, I motion, so I call the vote?
No, can you read what, so we know what you're saying?
I would like to motion that we reformalize a um committee to uh, to oversight the uh, I had it in my notes, to oversight the um.
Just take a second. It's fine.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion for, formalizing committees oversight the reopening and reviratization of Ojibwe Island tasked with securing funds and implementing safety measures and engaging community stakeholders. So, I think we, all that's in place though, uh, as far as implementing outside people. So, I would like to make that motion.
It's already the second.
You email me that.
Okay, I will.
Okay, so, all in favor, signify, aye.
Aye.
All that signify, say nay.
Okay, the motion is approved. You're still under miscellaneous business.
Okay, any other motions?
Yeah, that's why I wanted, uh, Tim or clerk, so I could say this correct, correct way. Because with all intent and purposes, I wanted to make a motion for a moratorium in regards to uh marijuana dispensaries. But I would also, now, as I'm listening, I'm thinking maybe we need a, a committee or some talk to make sure we're lined up legally in regards to that. The uh, uh, you know, moratorium or, you know, no more uh, or for a particular length of time. I went to Sa, uh, Delta College and I spoke to uh, an uh, group there. The young man was addicted to marijuana. Young man was addicted. It is ve, it is very addictive. But a lot of things that were brought out today, we could never have really control over. But I mean, like, as far as having more dispensaries, we can control that. We can't control who smokes, eats, drinks, and whatever else they do with marijuana. We, we can't, you know, a lot of parents buy it for their children. So, I wanted to make sure my motion was correct. And if I should not make that motion in regards to the moratorium, can we have a, if there's another committee that where we can discuss that, get the correct information, then bring it back. And I can say, this is why I'm not, this is why I am making that motion for the moratorium.
Well, I mean, it's up to council. If you, if there is a consensus now on council that you would, are, are interested in pursuing a moratorium, um, you could just ask the city attorney for a legal opinion about the ability to do that.
Okay.
And if there aren't legal questions, then to draft that type of motion.
Yeah, can, can we do that? I'd like to, I'd like to do that. Because we've heard so many citizens so concerned in regards uh to that. And uh, being a uh, prevention consultant myself, I have seen, and I've up close and personal, you know, uh, not just uh, crack, et cetera, et cetera, but people are addicted. You know, we can't pull their hand and make them do and not do. But we can, as a city of Saginaw and our citizens, we can uh not have them right now temporarily. So, that's what I'm looking at. Tempore, temporary, am I saying that? Temporary, temporary moratorium. So, if the city attorney can uh assist in that, I appreciate it.
So, do you want to make a motion to direct the city attorney to provide a legal opinion?
Yes.
Um, marijuana establishment moratorium?
Temporary moratorium because something may come up later. Yes. Okay, I would.
So, do I need a second for that?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Discussion.
Yeah, I do.
Oh.
Yeah, um, Councilwoman Sylvia, let's make sure too that when we look at whatever motion will be brought back to the table because we have existing businesses, um, exists, an existing business that may want to expand. And then we might want to look at um a moratorium for a certain timeframe with the sunset clause. And because what we've talked about before too, and I know because I'm on this commission, I talked about the GIS maps and stuff. So, make sure that all of that is considered as part of that motion. And, and with the new zoning and stuff. So, I was kind of hoping that we get more of a committee. But um, it, because I was, I talked to Mayor Seals about it as well. And we talked about maybe a moratorium with the sunset clause except for business expansion. Um, because we do have a grow facility that's when this, that's within the city. And they, there was a rumor or talk that they might want to expand and redevelop the rest of the old self-serve lumber. And our, our grow facility over on Atwater Street, you don't even know they're there. I mean, you drive by, it's a grow facility. There's no smell because it's all controlled. And they basically just grow and give it out. You know, they, not, not give it out.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have, what a lot, what a lot.
Ryan slip.
For a happy, regulated process.
And they're just throwing it out the window. Uh, no.
I'm going after.
But anyways, uh, but, you know, they just, they grow and they sell for, for the cannabis industry. So, too. And also take into consideration for non-recreational use, which is our hemp that's grown for clothing, rope, and other things like that too. Because I know that Ableys Greenhouse does do that in the fall.
Yeah, the city attorney would consider that, but would you want to say this?
Yeah, okay, good.
I, amendments, uh, I wanted to say that um you mentioned the, either having a committee or doing the, with the city attorney doing the motion. So, I didn't know if which one we should, because she asked you, Tim, like, which one should she do in, in, at this point right now? Which one was probably better?
I would, I, I would recommend.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion that, that Councilwoman made. But I, I would recommend the legal opinion to make sure.
Thank you.
You can do it first and how you would have to handle it. And I think we've done some work on, with previous councils on this, so it shouldn't be a whole lot. We'll bring that back to the next meeting and then we can decide, do we want to go forward with it now? Do we want to discuss it more? You know, what?
Okay.
What, and you can, you know, the moratorium can be ninety days or something. It has to be temporary in nature anyway.
Yeah.
But it, and we, and I know, uh, Councilman Ossis said this, we haven't gotten any new permits for requests for.
Like over two years.
Couple of years, sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so.
Alright, so call for the vote. Okay, all in favor signify.
Could you, could you read it? About what we're calling for.
Yep, it's to direct the city attorney to research the legalities regarding placing a temporary moratorium in regards to marijuana dispensaries.
Alright, all of those in favor signify, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, and a discussion, or the motion's been adopted?
Still under miscellaneous business.
Okay, are there any other motion? She's back at it.
Yes, Lone Wolf, back at it again, reporting for duty. Alright, I have a motion to refer to city staff, an amendment to ordinance, section thirty-three point two-one, to reflect a reduction in the maximum interest rate from ten to five percent for consideration at the March twenty-fourth council meeting, and I have a printed copy if you'd like that.
Second. Okay, so.
Trying to get done.
Discussion?
So just for council's reference, that ordinance currently doesn't fix a hard percentage interest rate. It says that it'll be set every year, just as the resolution was brought forward tonight, up to ten percent. But it doesn't set a fixed rate.
So we would, so the, the ordinance in reference, section thirty-three point two-one, says, you know, we may set a maximum interest rate of ten percent every year. So what this does is it's referring it to staff, so we can check it out, we can look at financial implications, take some time to consider it, talk to the community. And again, I, I wish I could have brought this a couple of meetings ago so that we could consider it for this year. I, yeah, I, I think that the interest rate's too high, I think we have a homelessness crisis and a foreclosure issue. And I also calculated all the amount just that the land bank does not own. So those are homes that we special assessed on, were probably foreclosed on, the land bank picked up and we just dissolved. You have to dissolve all that, you know, money that was owed, and that's $7,709. So when we're talking about the impacts of the differences between, like, like the impacts of an interest rate versus, okay, if people can't afford it, we, we don't collect on any of that money, cause it gets foreclosed on. And, and the long-term impacts of, of foreclosure in the city. The long-term impacts of, you know, landlords from out of state coming in, buying a bunch of property up at auction, which is what happens first to those properties that are foreclosed on, and then chopping them up and turning them into rentals. You know, I'm looking for every single way we can intervene on that process that's feasible and, and, and our power to do so.
My question would be for the city manager. So are, if these homes are foreclosed on, even if they took a loan or whatever, the city gets nothing, it's just over?
Any taxes that are owed, it's over. Now, do, do, in our experience, do people get foreclosed on because of these special assessments? No.
Okay.
No, I, I, I don't believe that for a second. They have to go three years without paying tax, any property taxes to be foreclosed on. I don't think this special assessment is, is pushing that over the edge. But, and I will say, you know, doing, looking into this, Saginaw County, since COVID, has been very, or much more reluctant to foreclose on properties than they have in the past. So they're doing payment plans, going beyond the state law with the three years. Yes, they've been doing that for probably five years now.
There is help. That was my next question.
There are, yes, there are different alternatives. Because there isn't, you know, the, the land bank does not want more properties. Right, they do not want more properties, so they have been working to reduce foreclosures. But by the time, and the number of special assessments, I mean, compared to all of the properties in the city, I don't think there are that many.
We sent out three hundred and thirty-two special assessments.
Three hundred and thirty-two, there are, I think, around eighteen to nineteen thousand parcels.
I told him, yeah.
Yeah, just a point of clarification on. Central parcels, yes. Just a point of clarification on a comment that was made by Councilwoman Hammond. The, the possibility of them coming in and turning all these properties into rentals is no. As a resident of the city for twenty-one years, the city has one under zoning changes that residents pushed, first started on the east side to make everything R1, and then on the west side. So if you look at the city's map of zoning, that really can't happen with the current zoning that we have, and it's something that I'm pushing for under the new zoning ordinances too. So I just, that was just a point of clarification on that, so that, that would not be something that would happen.
Right here. The city attorney, can you repeat what you said earlier regarding the ordinance? And tell, tell me more about that, with that statement you made?
Sure, so the, under the city ordinance, which establishes the procedure for assessing single lots, it states that council will set the interest rate annually up to ten percent. But it doesn't set a fixed rate, so it doesn't say the interest rate shall be eight percent.
So we don't have to necessarily get, put a number on it, we could just say up to ten percent, correct?
That's what your ordinance currently says, is up to ten percent. By resolution every year, you fix that rate for just that year.
Just that year, okay.
So already, if we don't, if we don't pass this, it's already set, whatever it's set.
That year.
Whatever, every year we have to do it.
It's ca- so essentially, it's capped. It's capped at ten percent, you can't go beyond ten percent. You set it every year, the motion, or the resolution that would set it for this year, you postpone to the next meeting, so. I thought you.
I deny, it got passed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Been a long day.
There were a lot of motions.
Long day.
So anyway, you're capping it at the ten percent, just from a logistical standpoint. So was the motion to set the new cap at five percent?
The motion is to refer to staff.
Okay.
To set it to five. So it's referring, and we'll consider it at the next meeting with data that we get from staff.
Okay.
That's the intent.
I, I don't, I, you know, from the interest point standpoint, I mean, you can certainly do this and, and have us bring back. I don't know what we would bring you to say the five percent cap is, is a good cap. So you have the ten percent now, a cap that allows you to set it, to move it. Whereas if you set it at five percent.
You can't go over five.
Can't go above it, so what if, if we could, I mean, it'd be awesome if we can get twelve percent interest from investments at some point, but what, which we aren't at that point right, right now, but if it was one day, then you would be.
We locked in, we have to go back and do this again.
Yes, yes, so you, you'd have to go back.
I have a question. How do we, is there a resolution we can make to ensure that it's, it's, it's set at a cap? But how do we, for the upcoming fiscal year, set it to where we can have it at five then? So is that, is that a specific way we do that? Or we just say it's up to ten and it is still at eight? Like, how do we switch that from being at eight and down to, to five?
So the ordinance provides up to ten, but like today, this afternoon, a resolution was before you to fix the single lot special assessment rule. And that, within that resolution, it stated that eight percent. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of motions about, about that language, but ultimately, that resolution was adopted with the eight percent. That's how that interest rate is fixed or set by council every year.
Gotcha.
Through that resolution.
So we just, okay, so we're good for the next year, so next year at this time, we're gonna be asked, this is gonna come before us again?
Every single year, yeah.
And then we can come back, and then you can come before us earlier so that we will have this information, and we can set it at whatever percent, up to ten percent. But we should know this beforehand, hopefully that we'll get communications that we can make this decision before March, hopefully as a council, yeah, right?
Okay, so we need a motion to vote.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, if you're done with discussion, then you can take your vote.
Okay, so can you read it again?
Read it again.
Yep, it's a motion to refer to city staff, amendment to ordinance, section thirty-three point two-one, to reflect a reduction in the maximum interest rate from ten to five percent for consideration at the March twenty-fourth council meeting.
So all that signify, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
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 Councilmember Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Seals?
Nay.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Nay.
Councilmember Oystash?
Nay.
Councilmember Braddock?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yay.
You have two yes and four no, that motion is denied. We are still under miscellaneous business.
Any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Alright, before everybody move, have a great day. Oh, gotta take a bow? I'm ready. Okay, all that signify approves, say aye.
Aye.
See you later. Alrighty, adios, meeting adjourned.